It's 2024, and we're going to open up.
With our audit report.
Let me consult the notes. Yes, with the audit report. We have Jeffrey Shaver here from O'Connor-Davies. PKF O'Connor-Davies. So do you need any time, or you're good to go?
Yeah, we're good to go.
Okay. Do you want, should we use the lectern, or?
Sure. Do you want me to just set it up for a second? So Jeff Shaver is a partner with PKF O'Connor-Davies, and tonight he's going to present. This is for our fiscal end of year audit. It's our external audit report that is required each year. And all the attachments are with the agenda. So Jeff is just going to go over the highlights of how we ended our year financially and touch upon where our fund balances and some other areas of the budget. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Maureen. Thank you for the introduction. I'm going to start off with a summary of our audit results. The audit is complete. We have issued what's known as an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's also referred to as a clean audit opinion, and that's the most favorable opinion that you can receive. What that means, the numbers in the financial statements, also the numbers that are summarized here in the PowerPoint, are complete and accurate and fairly stated. There is also a report, two other auditors' opinions that were issued in conjunction with the audit, required by government auditing standards and required by the Single Audit Act. One is the report on internal controls over financial reporting. In that report, we'd be required to inform the reader if there were any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls over financial reporting. I'm happy to report they're not noted in that report. It's also, it's also clean. There is the third opinion, the report on compliance for each major federal program. Because the school district expends more than $750,000 in the fiscal year of federal awards, it's subject to the federal compliance audit, where we take a closer look of certain specific programs, federal programs, on how you spent the money to ensure you're following the federal and state guidelines. Happy to report that that's also a clean audit opinion on a report over compliance. There is a separate extra classroom activities report, which is just the, a summary of the ins and outs, or cash inflows and outflows of the extra classroom activity funds. And then a report to those charged with governance, where we describe the auditor's opinion, similar to what I just said. And we describe management's responsibilities, which is primarily for selecting and implementing the appropriate accounting policies, presenting the financial statements in accordance with U.S. GAAP, maintaining, establishing and maintaining effective internal controls. We, as auditors, are responsible for rendering our audit opinions, which I just went over. And also, we would be required to report to you any unusual transactions or difficulties we encountered during the course of the audit. So I'm happy to report there were no difficulties, no disagreements with management. In fact, the audit went quite well. I did meet with the audit committee prior to this meeting. I congratulated the business office on doing a nice job. They make our job as easy as it can be while putting up with us for a week over the summer, when everyone wants to go home, you know, early and be enjoying the weather. They're, they're in here dealing with us as auditors. So thank them for that. They did, you know, do a nice job. And everything has been done. It's going to be filed with the state in timely, which would be, you know, considered October 15th. So thanks for, thanks for all the effort that you put in to help us get this done.
Thanks.
Well, in terms of financial highlights, this is a highly summarized schedule. General fund revenues and expenditures compared to the budget. It's a five-column presentation. The first column is the original budget, as approved by the voters. The only changes to that original budget are encumbrances or purchase orders that roll forward from the previous year. The final budget would encompass any transfers or amendments that the board approved during the year. The third column is your actual results. Fourth column is encumbrances or open purchase orders as of June 30th, 2024. The district has committed to spending the $311,000 to various vendors, but those goods or services have not been received. So those items will roll forward into your next year's budget. You can spend them down next year. And finally, the variance column is the difference between your final budget, actual, and less the encumbrances. So you can see the revenues were initially budgeted at $56.5 million, and the actual revenues were $58.7 million, some 2.2 greater than was anticipated to be collected. Some of the significant variances came with interest income. Many districts, when they were adopting their budgets for '23, '24, did not and could not anticipate the interest rates being as high as they were. And many districts that we audit did see favorable variances in that interest income category. That variance was approximately $600,000. There was also a positive variance in the state aid category of $1 million. When the state initially published its state aid runs, they subsequently modified them to make them larger for most districts. So we've been seeing at many districts we audit a positive budgetary variance in the state aid section. And that totals $1 million. So just between those two items, that's $1.6 million. Certainly favorable for the district, but just keep in mind, items like that tend to not be nonrecurring. So it's not something that would likely to happen, you know, on a recurring basis.
Yeah, just even of, sorry, if you, this past year, we earned close to $800,000 in interest income. Four years ago, we earned $35,000 in interest income. So it's that significant, yeah. Because when the interest rates were sub, sub a quarter, you know, now. But we're seeing that the Fed already cut the rate once. So again, it's still favorable, but I think we're, we don't make our money, we make our, the majority of our money is taxes and all the rest. And not that we don't want to rely on that, but we, we can't rely on interest income also. So as Jeff said, when we have those favorable variances, we can then, you'll see later about how, that's how we generate or are able to add to our fund balance.
There was also an underspending of the budget on the expenditure side of approximately $917,000. That's comprised of various categories. Salary savings, if you budget for a teacher to be there full year, and they're only there part of the year, there's a salary savings. Special education tends to be one where you achieve some savings if you budget to place a certain number of children out of district, and the number comes in favorable. You achieve some savings there. And of course, when you save on salaries, you also save on related benefits. So that tends to be one of the more significant items there. So the sum of all those expenditure categories, the savings, was about $917,000. And you can see, when you add the budgetary surplus together, there was a favorable variance of approximately $3,167,000. So you did better than what you anticipated doing in your budget, by $3,167,000. However, the initial plan, the initial plan for the budget, was a use of fund balance. Or you, you planned to use fund balance, and that number is the bottom, the number on the bottom left-hand side of the screen, $1,416,000. So on day one of the budget, if you had collected every dollar you anticipated, and spent every dollar you anticipated, your fund balance would have decreased by that $1,416,000. However, not only did you not use that, you were able to generate a little more, so you did a little better. And it resulted in the actual surplus, which you see in the third column, of $1,430,000. And that's really what, what it all boils down to, is the actual change in the fund balance. Positive $1,430,000. So the general fund, fund balance at the beginning of the year was $11,858,000. You end the year at $13,288,000. And this is a schedule here. The first column, what that fund balance is comprised of. It's divvied up into four different categories or buckets. The largest of them are the restricted, is the restricted category, just under $10 million in restricted funds. These funds have been set aside for these various purposes that you see on the screen, in accordance with either general municipal law or education law, to be used only for those specific purposes. Another thing I wanted to, to highlight is that within those reserves of $10 million, approximately $965,000 of those reserves are earmarked towards next year's budget. Or when I say next year, I mean this year, '24, '25 budget. So that's, some of those reserves being applied down to offset tax levy in '24, '25. Plus what you see as, within the assigned category. So fund balance that's been used to apply, reduce taxes in the '24, '25 budget, not from the restrictions, and that's $554,000. The sum of those two together is approximately $1.5 million. So of the $13.3 million, $1.5 million has been set aside to be used in, in '24, '25. And then that leaves you with what we refer to as unassigned fund balance, or it's residual category after all the other categories are taken into account. You're limited in that category by New York State law to be 4% of the next year's budget, and you're currently at the maximum amount allowed, which is generally considered the most prudent thing to do. Keep the unassigned fund balance at the amount allowed under New York State law. So. And just, you know, you can kind of see that the last two years, you know, and you could see the jump up. '23 was $11,858, and you see the jump up, $1.4 million, to get you to the $13,288. Okay, just wanted to shift gears slightly. This is a summary of the debt outstanding for the district as of June 30th, 2024. Keep in mind, when I talk about the reserves, the fund balance, and the results of operations, we're, we're talking about the modified accrual basis of accounting. So we don't recognize long-term liabilities as liabilities to the general fund. And we don't recognize capital assets or long-term assets as, as assets of the general fund. So when you spend money on assets, it's a charge to your general fund budget. When you issue long-term debt, it becomes an increase to your fund balance. This is the liabilities that are left after you issue that debt or pay down that debt, on the full accrual basis of accounting. So you can see there's bonded debt outstanding in terms of two, two separate debt issuances of $19,740,000. That's as of June 30th, 2024. And there's also a small piece of the energy performance contract debt, approximately $360,000 remaining due for a total debt outstanding of $20,100,000. On the bottom of the page, you just see the scheduled payments on those for '25, in the next five years, and then in the five-year increments thereafter. So you can see the bond payment for the principal in '25, '24, '25 will be approximately $1.4 billion. And the interest payment will be $708,000, followed by the energy performance contract of about $150,000 payment, bringing it to the totals you see on the right-hand column. In terms, one more slide, I almost forgot. This is the schedule of the other funds.
Jeff, I was just going to say, being you audit other districts, and you're looking at what their long-term debt is, you would, in your opinion, or in what you're saying, this is a relatively low debt load for a district?
I would say it's low to, you know, low to average, is what I would say.
Okay.
Some districts, their voters won't refuse to approve, to approve capital projects. So then you don't, you don't see much debt. So you see some of that. And you see, you know, some districts that have just embarked on a new capital project where they're kind of, some very large amounts. So you, I wouldn't say it's, certainly not an overload. You just have two pieces of, two bonds outstanding and nothing else in the way of long-term, long-term debt, really, other than the small energy performance contract. So certainly a reasonable debt load. The charge to the budget would be, in '25, $1,550,000 plus the service, so about one, 2.2 million of your budget's going towards debt service out of approximately, off the top of my head, $60 million budget. I'm not very good with numbers, but, you know, you can kind of figure the percentage. It's not a heavy debt load. I wouldn't consider it a heavy debt load. Lastly, just wanted to close with, this is a summary of the other, other funds that the district has. The special aid fund, where we account for those federal grants I mentioned that we had to do the single audit on, and some state grants. There's never any fund balance, or shouldn't be any fund balance in that fund. As you spend money on grant programs, you get the money back. You get the money back. So there really shouldn't be any, anything left there at the end of the year. Your capital projects fund, those are already voter-approved projects that are undergoing. So that, the $532,000 left in the capital projects funds, already earmarked for specific projects, has just yet to be spent down. The school lunch fund is your school lunch program that has to remain kind of self-sufficient and intact on its own, has a fund balance at the end of the year of $263,000. So you're within the guidelines of New York State in terms of the amount of fund balance you're allowed to carry there, which is a tricky thing, because currently the state only wants three months of expenditures in your fund balance. So some districts can, you know, you can easily generate that in one, in one year even, if you have, have a good year. But you can't be too small. Obviously, you don't want to run a deficit. So it's kind of like a little bit of a sweet spot there with the school lunch fund you're trying to get into. The special purpose fund accounts for mostly, like, the extra classroom activity funds are in there, and other like grants and scholarship programs and such are in there, $245,000. And the last fund is the debt service fund. So those funds can only be used to pay down those bonds that we just discussed. So you currently have $1,396,000 there to be used to pay down your debt. So that increased from last year. There were several capital project, the last capital projects you did were underspent. And then when you bond for a capital project and underspend, those funds have to be set aside to pay down the debt. So that's what you'll do going forward with that $1,396,000. And that's really all I had in terms of prepared remarks. If anyone from the board has any questions or comments, I'd be happy to, to try and answer them.
Jeffrey, thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments?
I just have one question on a fraud that was referenced from a third party, and insurance was going to cover $100,000. We're trying to work through the other. Could you give us some background on that?
It was, this is, it was a check that was stolen. Like we had, and it was like whitewashed, and it was presented, and, you know, fortunately cashed. And then you have to go through the process of the claims, and that's kind of where we are. So, yeah. We're not sure where, you know, because it went out with a batch of checks. So it could have been at where the vendor was. It, you know, it's one of these things that you, you don't know where, you know, where it was. But it's, unfortunately, it's something that's becoming more problematic and all that. And even, although most of our larger payments are done through wires, transfers and things such as that, you know, it's something that a lot of districts have been dealing with. But we have other mechanisms in place to like check more, you know, to be able to stay out, have, like, we've changed some of it to, to help mitigate that. Because, so every check that comes through, we check it before it's cashed by each vendor. But we do issue, you know, 500 checks or more every two weeks. So now we kind of go through and you check them in the system to make sure the vendors match the, because people, they whitewash. So it's actually our check, but they're changing the payees of those, of that particular check. But we have not had any issues. It's the first time we ever experienced it, so, yeah.
Is that process of matching up, is that our internal auditor?
No, we do that. Well, it happens on the Chase account, like it's matching up with our files, yeah.
It's a process called positive pay.
Positive pay, yeah.
Banks offer that before they cash a check, they make sure your check numbers and amounts match what's.
The vendor. It has to match the vendor file exactly, or else, you know.
That's good.
Yeah.
Let me stress, it was at the vendor end, not here.
Yes.
Yeah, definitely.
That was my first.
District, and you might want to mention.
So that was my first concern when we became aware of the situation during the audit. You know, how did, how did this happen? It's not known exactly what happened, but it's not, it doesn't, no one believes or thinks it was internal to the district. So it's something that happened by some external party, whether at the post office or who knows. No one inside the district is thought to have done anything wrong. That's always my first question, because I have, unfortunately, I've learned about quite a few of these at other districts and other municipalities. It's becoming common. And that's always my first concern, is how did this happen? And then, of course, the conversation goes to, you know, what are we doing going forward to make sure this doesn't happen again? And that's the enhanced positive pay, where you, you're checking not only check numbers and amounts, but also the vendor name. Because in this specific case, it was the vendor name that was washed.
And not, not the check, the check number and the check amount matched. So that's why it went through our system, because it matched exactly. And it was our check. You know, it was like our check that's in, like, has all the, the things on it.
It was a legitimate check.
Yeah.
The name was only changed.
Yeah.
So now, positive pay, if I'm, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, the positive pay was there previously, only for the check number and amounts. Now it's been enhanced, so that you also have the vendor name. So that can't happen again. I've seen instances where, not your district, where someone didn't modify the check at all.
That's what I mean.
And they just cashed it into a fraudulent bank account. So there's no way, unfortunately, to completely guard yourself against these situations. Some districts are going more towards wire transfers. There's other risks associated with that, which I did discuss with Maureen and, and the audit committee. But you have to, you know, just try to stay on top of these things the best you can.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? No, can I ask a quick question, maybe more towards Maureen? I know, so the insurance restricted fund, that's a new category that we're allowed to fund. And part of the rationale was that, you know, for example, you told, when we had, what was the, what was the storm here, Irma? No.
Yeah.
Ida.
Ida, yeah.
The damage that was done, that was covered by insurance, but the feeling was that if that happened again, we'd be on the hook for it. So we funded the, this insurance restricted fund. $750,000, is that attached to, is that the max that we could do? Like, where's it going from?
Well, it, well, there's, there's no max, I guess. I mean, I'm sure there is some level of max. But currently, our deductible for a named storm would be $1 million, or the first million. So this doesn't even cover our full deductible if it was a named storm and the damage occurred. And as we know, the insurance companies are getting hammered. And it's not only about what happens locally, it's what's currently happening, what's even currently happening in Florida will have an impact on our, our insurance rates and premiums moving forward. So, you know, as the insurance companies have had to make some modifications on their coverages, because it's just, there's a point in which, so I think, you know, especially with nicer, we did have a lot of meetings, and they did, you know, explain the rationale for needing to move to this. And although we had close to about $1 million on the track damage, some districts had far more, you know, lost buildings and all the rest. So depending on, I guess, the level of loss, the $1 million wouldn't be as bad, you know. But for us, that's what many districts, some districts already have this, because it also would cover things such as the CV claims that are huge now, and many of which are not covered by insurance. So those are for like the child victim claims, that now that people are able to go back, you know, as far as I think the 80s or so, under New York State law, there's been many, many districts that are paying out millions of dollars. Those are, are things that insurance does not cover. They would cover like more recent claims, but if there are things that occurred previous, or if the district was viewed to not have done, you know, they won't cover if they don't think you properly handled it either. So I'm not saying we have that case here, but in addition to that, this would be a reserve in which you could put money in for those, if we thought there was some exposure, or if there was a claim of any sort, that would be another, another reserve in which we could use toward, toward claims such as that.
Thank you. Thank you. Just one other question, Jeffrey. With the tax cert, you know, the amount in districted fund balance is pretty even. Maybe it's the same every year, the same amount of grievance that goes on. But I'm hearing a lot in Westchester, there's a lot of like jumps in taxes, you know, sudden reassessments upward. Are you seeing any sort of increased need for increasing our tax cert fund balance, or is that, you know?
It's always district by district. So you have to look at the exposure, you know, the town kind of handles the assessment.
Yeah, I think, I mean, our exposure, we're not each, there's some restrictions, as Jeff kind of mentioned earlier, around certain fund balances. Like, you know, how, how much can you keep in a particular? There are some guidelines around it. So with the tax cert, I believe our current liability is probably $10 or $11 million of claims out there. And again, these are not for, what is it, like a SCAR claim, which is a household, that's, that's a different. Those are settled within the year. So as a homeowner, if you were to grieve your taxes, those are, that, that's not what gets funded in this. This is all, this is commercial, except that co-ops and condos are considered non-homestead properties in the town of Greenberg, which is not the case in other districts. So they're taxed. And when there's claims, some of our exposure is for some of those residential buildings. Many of the claims we have paid are for residential buildings. But that, that is where those settlements are, or the monies that we pay back are reserved in there. But, but to answer your question, I think typically you see them settle from 30% to 40% of exposure, like most attorneys will tell you that. So I, I don't, I think as long as we have enough to face the things that we think are coming in the next five years, I think that's, you know, you want to keep a certain amount in there, I don't think there's a need to have $4 million in there. That would not be my recommendation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments?
Congratulations on a positive report.
Oh, thank you.
To you and your whole office.
Yeah, thank you so much. They are a great, great team. Not only they're like, they're a good group to work with, they're excellent at what they do. And, and, you know, I was, not to say put Jeff off the spot, but he did say that to the audit committee. And I, you know, I kind of know that, but they're very good and, you know, but they're also very nice to work with too, which is a bonus, right?
I understand.
I think it also goes to show how much work happens in the district, even when the buildings aren't occupied by students. So I like to especially commend the fact that there, you know, many people who are very active, who make for the handy work that happens throughout the year. So thank you to you and to your team. And certainly everybody in the district who does their part to make things run so smoothly.
Thank you. Just as, as Jeff said, the audit process, we do start in June, but we just finished our state reporting in September for that close of that audit. So our audit, I mean, it's an extensive audit, like anything else. They're, they actually come two days, you come two days in June, and we, they do prelims then, or I don't know if that's what, that's a called prelims, right? And then they come in with the team. But then after that, even after they leave, it's like goes on for a few, at least three to four weeks.
She's not out of my claws until she gets the book.
No, but, right, but I mean, even up to the wire, it's, it takes this long to even get, we only just finalized our report last week.
Oh, yeah.
With all the things they need. So it's like such a long process. And then we're already three months into the new fiscal year. So it's, you know, it is, it's, sometimes it feels, you know, you're just overwhelmed and you're already into the next, so.
Nice, but thank you for noting that. Jeffrey, thank you very much. I guess we'll see you a year from now, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
He's off to Irvington schools.
I wasn't going to mention the name.
Oh, sorry.
Uh-oh.
It's on, it's on board docs. It's on board docs. Tell Carol I said hello.
Very much.
Thanks. Good slides up.
Yeah, we're going to start up, so.
I'm going to start off with this.
You don't have any slides, Chris?
I do not. Oh, we do have, we do. Does he want to do that one first? Okay.
Your timeline slides.
Yes, he wanted to go over those, thanks.
Want me to get us?
Yeah.
Get us through that?
Get us through that?
You're going to start?
Yeah, I'll start.
Yep.
He was just frozen for a second. I'm just trying to.
Here we go.
I'll get it from a background. Just want to get back on the screen here and go on a second. I don't know why it's so slow. We're going to move on to a presentation about the upcoming bond. We're going to open with, I don't have it in front, it makes my computer stuck, but with a timeline that the admins have put together for the bond process, where we've been and where we need to head to, so.
Yeah, so thank you. I'll, I'll move through what's a fairly substantial deck pretty quickly, then Maureen will backfill. You're about as a board in the community, in my mind, these meetings are done in public. So yes, it's a meeting of the board in public, but it's really a key community communication moment. In my first district, I was reminded that every time you meet with your board, that's a public meeting, don't forget it. And the community needs to remember that because this is a key point of communication. So basically, for almost since I arrived, due to not me, but Maureen and others, we've been working and talking with the board about a bond potentially. Obviously, the district had a very successful bond in terms of the product with Hillside and the work there. And it's, it's, it's been a game changer here in Hastings. And all you have to do is be at a back-to-school night at Hillside in the multipurpose room with 500-plus families in incredibly wonderful, lovely space, only exceeded by the quality of the faculty and staff, to get a sense of when this village commits to an investment in its facilities, that's truly very much of a long-term proposition. And there, up the hill, it's a great success. And we're going to hear later, new concepts from the same architects that brought us to that great moment at Hillside, which Emily stressed, it's many, many moments. But we've been at this for a while, post that work in Hillside to talk with the board, and there's been some natural transitions in the board. We now, over the next several months, in a very definitely needed aggressive way, are going to bring you some very powerful concepts. Last meeting, you heard me say that rightly so, even public entities have to do things in private before they come out to the public. So a lot of what you're going to see here as a board has been, been in development, in critique. It's still draft, it is still draft, did you hear me say that? It is still draft. But now's the time to be bringing it to you as a board and to be bringing it out to the public for feedback and critique. What's very important here, and this is a detailed slide, LAN has put this together, that's one of our key partners here, but it gives you where we've been in terms of key work. And you're going to, over the next really four weeks, hear about design issues, concepts for the Farragut complex, that's tonight. Then on November sixth, you're going to hear proposals as it relates to the athletic complex. Behind the scenes, LAN is working very closely with PBDW on how pulling this whole piece together. And I'm not going to, again, read this slide, it's in the public record, the headlines here matter the most, but you have some details. After tonight, with feedback, as I've mentioned, PBDW and LAN will get back together with the internal team to begin assessing more of what we're hearing, what we're learning. You can see then, there's also part of this beyond the Farragut complex work, beyond the fields work, is the building condition study. You've heard about that, the BCS, that's required by the state of New York. That's also deliverable for you, which relates to everything here. Twenty-second, twenty-fourth, twenty-eighth, you begin to see, as we move along here, you see in there the key term cost estimation. Maureen can speak to that a little bit later. These are concept, concepts right now, separate from the exact costs. This is my third district working on major capital pieces. I was lucky to be in Greenwich when they created the Performing Arts Center. I arrived there, and if you get a chance to go to Greenwich, see the Performing Arts Center, ten years ago was a forty-two million dollar project, you could bring it up forward to what it, what it is. But intensive work there, even there, the concepts were looked at, the concepts were looked at fully and comprehensively, then they were costed out, and then the various bodies there that make the decisions in the state of Connecticut, the Board of Ed, a building committee, the, the town leaders, they then applied costs and then began, if you will, to value out what they wanted to hold on to. So it's very important right now that we are bringing you the concepts comprehensively. We will cost these out and be back to you with that. But we urge you today not to get, dive into what's that going to cost, what's that going to cost? That's going to come later in a very planned and formal way. Key dates here, on the sixth of November is when you'll hear from LAN. And again, they're in the midst of this very actively, they'll be particularly to lead with the LA Group on the athletic field proposals. You then see what goes on after that, more work as it relates to more cost estimate. We are in the state of New York, the state of New York rightly leans in quite heavily and quite substantially on anything, a whole set of approvals that have to happen. And LAN is quite expert, as you've heard, working with tens upon tens of districts on bonds and all the processes here. Again, you can go back and study this later. The point of this timeline, I hope you see, is that we want you to put tonight in the brief historic context and put in, in the context of where are we headed? So you can fit it all together. Addition renderings go on, has materials, preliminary submission, milestone, it's all here, we're detailing, come back and study this. We're into, in the January, key things that have to happen, again, this is all from LAN and their expertise of guiding districts through this process elsewhere for very significant capital bond work. So this is all lock, solid, accurate, but you can see it's an aggressive timeline. Let me come back to December. You are going to be facing some key decision points in December if we're going to have a shot at a May bond referendum. So let me just stress that, December is going to be a key decision point. Again, you see the layout here, what has to be submitted, you see NICID, you see other state agencies and authorities. Here, we then get to these dates here, and the ideal is that by May, we'll have had this referendum vote. There is a significant caveat in this schedule that LAN says this is the best estimate timeline. We also, though, are dealing with the state authorities. And they are sometimes efficient and sometimes not. But I would hope they would be as efficient as possible with this on this. Bond vote in May, you see all the things that are required for that, with we hope, construction in the September to twenty-six onward period. So again, this is all up here, this is the first time we've put this together, Maureen has worked very closely with LAN and PBDW to put this timeline together. The financing timeline, I don't know if you want to step in here, Maureen, and speak to this at all? And then we're going to end with the enrollment slide, because we want to reiterate that.
Sure, so again, we did do a little bit, for those who remember, in June, we had put a schedule together, but that was based on a much earlier vote. So again, we, we kind of went back with the assistance of LAN and working with PBDW and some other folks and, and put together now where we stand today and, you know, this proposed timeline. So I felt what we did also in the spring, it may be helpful to think also about if, in fact, the vote was in May, you know, what does that mean in terms of the payment of this, of whatever, as Bill said, we, you know, we'll get into more of what, what the costs as they, as we start understanding more the scope of work. But just in terms of if we're assuming we have that May vote, and again, this will be critical, we'll be communicating with this, our community also, just so they understand the impact on taxes and when that would hit. So with the, assuming the May vote, and as Bill, we showed on the previous slide, the work because of the getting permits from the state of New York can take, you know, quite some time. So until then, until we have the approved project, which again, can take about a year or so, and then we're able to go out to bid and word the contracts, and then work starts, right? So then, once work starts, about six months in or so, we're going to start needing some money to, to start paying our vendors off. So the, what districts typically do is the issue was called a ban, and that's a bond anticipation note. And with that, you're actually allowed to borrow up to almost the entire amount of your bond authorization. Well, what's helpful about this is we're unable to start getting state aid back on our completed project until we close those out with the state. So what the ban allows us to do is not pay principal, and it allows us to do short-term borrowing to get, you know, to get the work started and all the rest. So on the last, last two, this is, every district does it, we only issued a one-year ban. The last time, many districts may roll a ban one or two years, depending on interest rates. We issued the bond very quickly last time because we got into a great bond market and great rates, so that, that's why we didn't roll a ban. I say all this, I mean, maybe it's too, too many words, but as you can see with this schedule, you're not really, or the taxpayers, the first time I would say, they're going to see a significant increase of what this would be, would be in the twenty-nine, thirty school year. Because as you can see, the first ban, and as an example, the last time we issued a ban on the eighteen million dollar project, I think we borrowed fif, fifteen or so, I think we paid thirty thousand dollars worth of interest. So again, the first year, we, we had a lot of the work was completed and we paid thirty thousand dollars. And the following year, we issued our, our bond and we actually, the, the structure of it was that we had a principal payment first, and then the, once the work was fully online, we did a principal and a interest payment. So again, as you can see, you know, these dates seem so far off, but we'll get much more into the actual, what is the actual dollar amount, what is the actual impact of the tax rate, once we have everything else. But just to understand that, even if we vote now, these costs won't hit for about three year, three budget cycles away. And then I did note here, which I did also include last year, that our 2016 budget, excuse me, bond, which was the smaller issuance, which is shown in our financial statements, that will be fully paid in 2031. It, it seems so far away, but I guess it's not that far away when you look at this bond schedule.
So let me go to one last slide, but let me stress that we sprinted through this, but you have this document, and you intentionally have the headlines in each milestone moment with detail, so you can go back and study it. Fortunately, the next meeting, the twenty-second, we will not have anyone presenting, that'll be a chance for us to talk and reflect a bit more with you as a board on this timeline and the detail here, you still have time to study it. Again, we didn't want this presentation tonight unless you got to see the entire timeline plan and put it all into context. Now let me end with this slide. You as a board have been receiving enrollment updates from me almost every week, and we've been putting them out publicly. Wherever I've worked, I like to talk about that town, first name, then myth. One of the Hastings myths is that we have students disappearing on us, that we're shrinking school system. You can see just from last year to this year, that is not the case. We've been very much stable, if not now increasing our enrollment, and that's essential to sort of what you're going to hear very much about the Farragut complex, and the fact that a variety of fresh eyes on us doing incredible work here for our students, but this is an overcrowded building, particularly at the middle school level. Andy Klayman coming in has seen it, Scott Winn coming in has seen it, Dan Waldeck, who is now here, he has seen it. These are all proven veteran educators. You as a board and walking the facility and your required tour early this fall, even as parents, so I think some of you as parents saw, this is an overcrowded facility, incredibly well-kept, incredibly clean, but is a facility very much needing more space. We cannot just take a fifth grade and put them at Hillside. If you want to ask that question, we'll later come back to it, but that is a multimillion-dollar solution in the least. And we spent all that time up at Hillside getting what is really a state-of-the-art elementary school in so many ways. And to try and say, we will create space here by just moving the fifth grade out, one is incredibly expensive, and I'd argue it's a Band-Aid, because you still are left a lot of very fundamental space problems here for the quality of teaching and learning, which I think we're going to learn more about tonight. But again, we're tracking enrollment, we're looking at enrollment, go for a circle, and I say it in the most fun, polite way, it is Hastings myth to think that we are losing students or even with that number, we can go back to what we used to do. You don't want art in a cart, you don't want music away from certain music rooms, you don't want your psychologists and your counselors and your social workers combining in different spaces when they don't need to. We are trying to get a right size to this district for the high-quality education and service and support that Hastings residents need and should be demanding. So that's this opening one, we hand it off now for an in-depth look at the concepts.
Sure, welcome. So we have Leonard Leon here from PBDW. Finally learning how to say acronym.
Tongue twister.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Maureen is going to get the presentation up. We'll, we'll kind of tag team with the slides and speak as we present the concepts design. While she's, while she's starting, for the new board members, obviously, and, and the existing board members, we're delighted to be back since June to present our conclusions and our design vision. My name, again, is Leonard Leon. My firm, PBDW Architects, as Bill stated, worked on and, and, you know, designed and built the Hillside complex. We have over thirty years of private and public school experience in the city, as well as here in Westchester. We think the ideas that we're going to present to you will greatly transform the Hastings student experience, as well as allow Hastings to accommodate the future needs and spatial needs as well as programmatic needs. The master plan with a shelf life of ten to fifteen years is an essential tool for managing the district's physical property, for identifying priorities, which we did and have, and for understanding the scope and magnitude of the various capital improvements associated with the pre-bond. Today, what we'll do is we'll begin again with the recap of the program summary and the space deficiencies shared at our last meeting. From there, we'll follow with our concept summary, describing four distinct elements. Specifically, they are the cafeteria addition, the Washington addition, Washington third-floor renovation, the new Farragut entry. And then lastly, we have a, a four-phase approach to executing this master plan. And we'll go through the four phases in terms of what we feel is the most important first phase, second, third, and fourth, which obviously would be executed through time. So with that said, Rena, we'll start with our recap.
I can't.
Okay.
Okay. I'm, I'm not sure how much is legible, but, um, but we, last time we were here in June, late May, we presented a really robust program summary of the Farragut complex. And we start out this master plan not with any vision in place, but really just trying to analyze and understand how the building functions, how the, the faculty functions, we, you know, we went through interviews with students and whatnot, really all aspects of the building. And the most important piece of that analysis was that fifty percent of your usable square footage of the building is for the high school, and only thirty percent of that is for the middle school, even though you have the same grade level, the same amount of grade levels in that, in each school, the middle school and high school. So your middle school is crunched, and that's something that is felt throughout the school, students, faculty, admin. And so really having gone through a, a square footage, usable square footage analysis and getting us to that place allowed us to see it holistically in terms of the building and where that is experienced the most. There are shared spaces that, that make up another twenty percent, that's the cafeteria, the library, maker space areas. But really, the biggest needs are that bridging that twenty percent for the middle school, right? That, that's the biggest need in the school. So that's four to six classrooms, that's breakout spaces, that's faculty offices, there are no dedicated faculty offices for the middle school, even though they do double the amount of the, of coordination, right, by grade level and by subject. And consolidation of special ed, special ed in the middle school is spread out throughout the, the facility. The high school, the needs were really breakout spaces for high school students and faculty, and updating the classrooms throughout with outlets and whiteboards and updated technology. In the shared spaces, creating a central maker space or art suite, guidance suite was something that really came up as, as a better use of space within the building and better shared resources. Updating this space, the Blue Lecture Room, and private rooms for testing, for private calls, Zoom calls, all, you know, all of those that have really boomed in the last four years. Chorus has always been a concern, and so there's no dedicated chorus space. And I'll add to that resolving circulation throughout the entire building. I mean, for anyone who comes to the building new, it is impossible to find your way. So we, you know, we had some additional needs, resolving paint schemes throughout and whatnot. I'm not going to spend time getting into those, but that's part of the presentation as well that we got into. So with that understanding, we went into concept design. And our concept design proposed three additions, as well as some other moves that we'll get into. We took a really comprehensive approach to how we looked at how we would resolve the building, and then paired back, after going through that comprehensive approach, then paired back to how this would be. paired back to how this would be phased over time, so that this really is a robust document for the district and not just looking at the next iteration, but something that helps the district to plan for the future in the long term by taking small steps at a time. So, the cafeteria addition is one of the most major moves, we'll get into that, and that is moving the cafeteria, which now lives at your third story of a small wing in the middle of the school, the Washington wing, to really the heart of the campus in the courtyard over here. The second is expanding the Washington wing, and the third is a new entrance for the Farragut complex to really establish a central point of entry and a central kind of resolution to a lot of the circulation, both exterior and interior, and we'll get into that as well. The cafeteria addition is about 8,300 square feet in total, the Washington addition, little over 10,000 square feet. Obviously, with moving the cafeteria, there's also reprogramming that third floor, which is a little over 4,500 square feet of usable square footage, program space, and then the Farragut entry, just under 2,000 square feet.
Okay. So, with the cafeteria, it's located on the first floor. That ground floor is the, really, it's connected to the ground floor, the entry. I know the second, the high school comes up the second floor, but really, the ground floor is where I think the action is. So, what we ended up doing is coming up with a enclosure embedded in this existing courtyard, which is underutilized. You can see in the plan on the right, the, this Blue Lecture Room would become the food service kitchen. It's across from the loading area, because the loading area is on the other side of the Washington wing. That made a lot of sense. The other thing was, the cafeteria could then, by its positioning on the first floor, exit onto the remaining portion of the courtyard, which we think would be a great amenity for not only the students when they're having their lunches, but it could be an educational space outside. And to bring life back into a courtyard, I think that is too big with currently nothing really happening in it. It's a north-facing space, and one of the advantages of building within a courtyard is you already have two existing walls, these walls here, of your addition. So, instead of doing a freestanding, four-sided addition, you're actually saving a lot of money by doing a north-facing, one and kind of two-sided addition. The geometry, it kind of takes cues from code requirements and light and air, won't get into that. With the cafeteria, though, you are increasing the number of seats, number of tables, by at least, I think, four or five, how many are we increasing? Maybe 20, 30 people?
About a 25% increase.
25%.
That's a big deal.
What is also really exciting, I think, about this cafeteria is it allows it to be used when, obviously, you're not eating your lunches and having the various shifts for lunch. It could be a morning, you know, breakfast area, it could be an evening parent-teacher night, it could be an event space. And with it, you also have, obviously, the courtyard. So, with the openings that, the outdoor space and the landscape that could happen, it's really exciting. Now, the north-facing is also great in terms of just bringing in natural light that isn't a direct sun and, you know, natural light, north light is always the best light. The other thing that we've done is, at the end of it, if you look at the kind of bathroom end, it's that great bar, we've introduced bathrooms, which I think is something that's really important to have when you have all these kids coming down and using the space. And we added a community room. It's really the Blue Lecture Room, which then has a really prominent place within this space. So, that kind of pink area there. There are a couple of renderings, and we'll get into that a little bit. There is a connecting stair, obviously, to the second floor. So, the high school students who live kind of on the second floor in the Farragut wing, they, you know, they come in the entrance that they do, which means they climb up to the second floor, and then the overlook, that kind of student lounge right now, would connect directly to that stair. And, right. Okay, so let me just get to the next one. So, this is the second floor. The white is kind of space below you, so the white is the cafeteria below. You can see on the far right, you come up those stairs I spoke about. We felt that the lobby area with the little kind of trophy area was underutilized, and we understand that conference space, private spaces, you know, something that is a luxury. So, I think by having that here, we can, you can have that as kind of a teacher's lounge, a student conference area with some seating. The seating for the lobby kind of remains, and then we've inserted a few private prefabricated kind of sound booths for Zooming or having meetings, there's six of them. And then, the rest of the space, the mezzanine, we call this, or really it's the second floor, has some step seating. This could be for the high school kids, if there's an event going on, or even to have their lunch, they could have it up there. It's more connected to the high school wing and the level. Added another breakout room, again, that's a multipurpose room, and then the stairs take you down. So, this double-height space, you can see some of the renderings on the left. The middle one has the little, you know, the little booths, and then the bottom one shows where you would be from the steps when you looked down. Let's go to the next one. Oh. Okay. What happened to this section?
It comes later on.
Oh, okay.
We'll go back to it.
Yeah, we'll go back to that.
So, in looking at the reprogramming of the current cafeteria level, you'll see that on the right side, the third floor of the Washington wing, we can gain classroom space, breakout space, I mean, you can fit up to, up to five classrooms here, but we've also prioritized, recommended prioritizing special education on this floor. So, really consolidating your special education areas plus three classrooms. Knowing that circulation within the middle school and the lockers, especially within this wing, are problematic, we've also proposed a locker alcove area to help also resolve the circulation from the Washington wing into the bridge. That's part of this rendered down here, the snapshot down there. And so, that, this creates a new program space on the third floor and resolution of the lockers on the second floor of the Washington wing.
One thing to add, this also alleviates the ball neck of the cafeteria on the third floor, and you can see the stair there, that's the current entry to the cafeteria. So, by having it just be, obviously, occupancy much lower, it's now classrooms or breakout rooms, the flow through this corridor will be much more unimpacted, so to speak, with population growth.
In looking at our full proposed addition, the second component is an addition to the Washington wing itself. So, just making those two moves for the cafeteria and reprogramming still didn't give us enough space for faculty offices for the middle school, for the amount of breakout spaces that are needed for the middle school, and the amount of classroom spaces. So, we were looking at an addition to the Washington wing that extends, extends, oh, let's see, there we go, that extends over where the current play yard is, right? So, the driveway will come to, a bigger site plan later, but this really allows that third floor to become full classroom spaces, and then the addition to become breakout spaces, resolved lockers, have offices, faculty offices, admin at another side of the building as well, which is always better, add bathrooms and other bathrooming, and circulation as well.
Could you just explain again where the addition actually is?
Sure. So, the current, the current end of the building is over here.
Oh, okay.
So, if I go back one slide, right, this is, this is without the addition, this is that same wing without the addition, and then going to with an addition, that's the curved, the curved extension off of that wing.
It sort of cuts into that parking lot?
Exactly.
Play-ish area?
Yes.
Right out here.
So, if this is, if this is the play yard over here, right, the, the service entrance is coming up over here, right, there's currently the bridge that goes into the courtyard. We're keeping that bridge entrance into the courtyard, and this addition comes out over it, on the, on the second and third floor of the Washington wing. So, with the cafeteria, right, students come right out of the cafeteria in the courtyard, come right out under the bridge into the play yard, right? That's a really nice exit.
So, that whole area is intact.
Right. And, and with the addition, you're coming out underneath it, and you have the, the Washington addition kind of overlooking that, so that there's supervision as well over the play yard.
That's, in the last slide you were looking at with the different classrooms, I noticed that the classrooms vary in size from like 666 square feet to 979. Like, how do you, how do you decide that?
So, I, in order to get aid on a new classroom, it has to be at least 770 square feet. I mean, that's, that's really why, and in our previous presentation, we went through kind of an idealized size classroom, and we are undersized on almost all of our classrooms in the entire Farragut building, by quite a lot in some places. So, some of these are existing classrooms.
Okay.
Some, the, this wing is really new classrooms, and so that's why they're much larger. And then, there are different regulations as well for breakout spaces or special education spaces and minimums there as well. So, these are the two additions that we kind of started off with, the cafeteria addition in the courtyard and the Farragut addition as well. Leonard, do you want to?
Yeah.
The Washington addition.
And just a quick comment about, you know, the concept elevation right now. You know, when we're adding something, I think, new, something, I think, really important to stitching the campus together, we have opportunities here, because this is facing north. So, with north light, you don't have to deal with a lot of shading, you never get direct sunlight, because the sun moves from east to west along the southern portion. So, when you have that opportunity, you do these things, you know, it's glass, it's glass and steel or aluminum, mullions, but it allows everybody inside to really feel like they're outside, you know, so that connectivity to the, to the, I know it's not green, but to the green space, to the other, you know, students in the other classrooms, it just becomes a really, I think, simple way to connect people. As well as, in this Washington wing, you know, it now would have a prominent view on to that play area, which I think is really good. You can get eyes on the street, so to speak. And, again, you know, we looked at various ways to think about the facade, but you have a very heavy, thick building, and this is also going to be a new gateway. Like, I can envision this at night, when there's a parent-teacher, this could be the way that you go in directly through, underneath that, you know, underneath the walkway, through the arch, and then into this courtyard. And so, your project now is activated in both directions, right? During the day, the students come from the inside out, and at night, you go from the outside in, kind of in both directions, which I think it's a great way to maximize every square inch of your, of your property. A little bit more specifically to this, this is a section which is cut through the building. You can see, to the left is the, you know, green terrace landscape. So, the first floor is four steps, which is about 24 inches above, I mean, above the courtyard, which you can see by one of these doors that you take out. So, obviously, we're going to maintain that levelness for accessibility and ADA, but then we have an opportunity to kind of terrace down slightly to match the existing contours of the courtyard. One of the things that I think is really unique about this initial concept is, in order not to kind of interfere with any of the windows in the existing building, you can see on the right, you know, we have what's called a spandrel condition. It's a spandrel, it's the space between the window to the window. That's a limited amount, but within that spandrel condition, we can put a roof, and as you kind of move out of that, we can then introduce some light, some top light into the space. Again, it's northern light, and when spaces are wide, you know, it's always, once you cover it out, the space to the right gets very dark. So, what's really interesting about this is there'll be just these strips of light that will kind of create the ceiling condition to bring in natural light, kind of beyond just the, you know, the story and a half wall. Above that, we're looking at potentially, because the science department is up there, that could be a outdoor science experimental garden and whatnot. I mean, why not, right? I think it would be great to maybe be outside and learn about science. And then, at the very far end, again, the bathrooms on the lower right, you see the two doors, they make a lot of sense in terms of tucked away under the stair, there might be even an access to the basement, we're looking into that. And then, on the left, you see two kind of glass volumes with curved corners, again, there are breakout space and the Blue Lecture Room down here. So, when, you know, let's say, five years from now, when this is built, you know, you'll be able to meet here, there's a, you know, board meetings could be happening, you could have, you know, members of committee sitting and, you know, watching on television or just seeing what's happening right there. So, I think that really allows this project not just to be about cafeteria, but it's similar in a sense to Hillside, it's kind of a cafitorium. So, we're, yeah, so we should go to the next slide. We've lost the color. These are just some, you know, images from, from other projects that really, you know, allow us to look at various ways to, to deal with stairs, to deal with a large span, step seating, things that we're inspired by.
Existing buildings, exterior walls, enclosing those, we're conscious of the offices that are there as well, and keeping the light into the offices that are around the perimeter as well. So, that, the move with the cafeteria was kind of the first move to create a, a heart of the building, which helps to resolve circulation, to really establish this level of the building that we're on now, the ground level of the building, as, as an accessible entrance into the building, an accessible heart of the building, and so that really landed also towards, well, where's the entry for Farragut? Because, so, in starting to think about that, we also went back to how the building has evolved and how the circuitous circulation also has, has come about. The, so just a quick overview of that, the building started with the Farragut and then the Washington wing. The addition for the high school at Mount Hope came after that in 1925. And so, the, the central part of the building has always kind of been this, this central core, right? And that was infilled, that central core of the building was infilled in 1931, when they also built the School Street addition. And then, so, really, we've been dealing with this configuration of the building since 1931, but it has been kind of an unresolved circulation throughout the building since 1931 as well, right? It's kind of this clog up of, of the circulation since then.
It's almost 100 years, but...
And then, and then the addition for the high school gym and the bridge later in the 70s and 80s. So, thinking about the building from the outside, right, from the street, our current condition is we have, we have a decently clear entry into the high school at Mount Hope, but otherwise, to the middle school, I mean, the middle school entry right now is used on an inaccessible level from the parking lot on the very far end of the, of the Farragut wing, mostly because of, that was the only way, way to really corral students in a, in a secure way right now, but it's not... But it's not, it's definitely not the most ideal for anyone who's done it. It's definitely not the most pleasant. And, um, and there's really no, uh, there's really no natural pathway that leads you towards there. So you kind of, you get to the, the Farragut entrance of the building and you see that the building is present on Farragut, but don't really know where to go. And so we've looked at that central part of the Farragut wing as a new entrance way. So entering down in the central wing, sorry, entering down in the central wing on this level, um, bringing a, a, an entrance way out from the front, uh, creating a, a new entrance. And we'll get into some renders in a little bit. But allows you to, to excessively enter at this level either to the middle school or to the high school or, and really to the hub and center of the cafeteria as well. So just looking at that with a little more detail, right? This is our existing condition. It's kind of, you, it, you would think that the entrance would be right here, right? You have that symmetry in the building, but there's nothing there. In fact, it's completely fenced off, that area. There's a, there's a concrete bench there that no one really uses, um, or it is really kind of inaccessible. And so we're looking to bring out the, um, the, the existing, from the existing wall, a new wall that helps to kind of lead everyone towards this point. Um, and then creates a new security vestibule where people can then enter into the building through, around either way.
So, um, when, when we conceived of the project, you know, it, the, the street frontage, you know, is quite long. And the roadway, you know, everyone drives really fast to go downtown. Um, and you have a, there's an existing car park lane. So we felt that with the four-story building, I mean, it's, it's a huge central core, um, that the response and entry to be even recognizable should have a little bit of, we think, uh, gravitas to it, some length, right? So here, we're again, you know, putting a little bit of the Hastings, uh, you know, your, your, um.
Yellow jacket.
Yes, your yellow jacket, um, the, the name. We see this wall potentially, you know, in, um, a lighter material. It could be beautiful copper, you know, we, we, we're defining the shape right now. Um, in this rendering, you'll see the way it works would be everyone would come to the middle. Um, there's a slight kind of bend in the wall just to, you know, um, receive people. So when you're moving, you're kind of moving a little closer to the center. Uh, in the middle there, you know, there, there's a little canopy for the rain, very simple. And then you enter, um, a space, which is really a, a large lobby. It's only about, I'll go to the next slide. Um, can you go to the next one? Oh, oh, sorry, we'll, we'll get inside in a bit. So you can see that the, the presence of this large, lower lobby form, I think, helps to give the building in the background a little bit of, um, kind of base and complements the idea of the, the entire, uh, project and its length at this facade. Um, obviously, we're going to be reviewing this with SHPO and they'll have comments. But we, we feel that this will be very well received. It's a very simple wall. I, I don't want it, I don't think anybody here wants to, uh, make it overly complicated. The architecture in the back, you know, is very, is very simple. And I think we should, we should honor that. Um, so let's go to the next one. And here's the section. So we're, we're only coming out as far as we want to come out. Um, we're coming out about, you know, 15 feet, 12 to 15 feet. Um, the canopy you see there. And then, um, we're looking at a sloping skylight to bring some additional light in, um, and also to light the, um, clear story wall of the gym. Um, with this said, uh, again, this would be the control point and hopefully for everybody. Uh, is there a plant that we can go back to? Like, maybe go back to, yeah. Oh, the, no, the other one, the larger one. Yeah, so you know, there's a control point, right? Everyone comes in, uh, there's security, obviously. And then if you're, you know, off to the lower, the middle school, you go left. If you're off to high school, you go right. This is also where parents and the public can come in, uh, evenings, weekends, you know, it, it's, it's a lobby. And you don't have a lobby. You just have doors that lead to stairwells. And so I think having such a large project, large, you know, uh, you have a lot of square footage here. You deserve just a little bit, you know, more elegant way to come to school. And we firmly believe that, um, that's a really important part of, of what we do and what is important for you, uh, as, you know, custodians of, of the future generations here. So, um, we have more, I think.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's kind of the, the, those are the three major components of additions. But we also looked at, um, kind of holistically, the building and reshuffling and just kind of making, um, make, making a phased plan for how this can be implemented, not just with additions, but also to really help to, uh, to reorganize some of the spaces so that they, they're more cohesive within each space. So we really see phase one as the, the entry and the cafeteria, right? That establishes your heart of your building. That's kind of the most major move, right? And your entrance into that, into the building as the heart. And so that's really the, the phase one, um, along with addressing the, the exterior green spaces, the courtyard, the, uh, resolution of some of the pathways in front of that central area. Um, and there's some little moves that go with that as well. So creating a chorus room next to the music suite, um, moving the, the middle school office, uh, across from the cafeteria so that that's really at a more central part in the, um, in the building. And you have a classroom space then on the Farragut wing. As well, uh, just some adjacencies, uh, in the high school wing at that level as well. Um, and then reprogramming that third floor of the, of the Farr, Washington wing, sorry. Um, so reprogramming of the third floor of that Washington wing. That really resolves your special education spaces. Um, we are creating three classrooms over here. But if we are taking up some of the classrooms down here, which are currently world language classrooms, those really move up to that level. So we've done a lot for the building, but, um, but you know, the, the work is not done because there still is that need for ex, uh, extra square footage, uh, in the middle school specifically. And so then going to phase two, um, this is just kind of an interim phase. That's a, that's an interior reshuffle before moving on to the Washington addition. So, uh, your main existing spaces that are really problematic are that first floor of the Farragut wing. You can see just from the colors, the program is kind of a mishmash of different program. And, uh, the, on the athletics wing, we know that there are some concerns with inequity between spaces, women's and men's locker rooms as well. There's a TV studio down there that really has no relation to the rest of the, the program on that floor. So trying to kind of think about those and resolve them as well. And so what we've done at this floor is, um, move the program to other area, the program that is currently on that lower level of the Farragut wing to other areas of the building and move the administration, um, down into that area of the building. So administration offices are, are there. Uh, and then move TV studio up adjacent to an arts area, which allows us to also bring health, middle school health down next to high school health and allows us to extend the women's locker room for a bigger women's locker room. At the same time, we'd expect to kind of resolve the circuitous nature within the men's locker room. I don't know how many of you have been in there, but.
I brought everybody in there.
Needs attention. As well as, um, as really creating storage for athletics, PE, outside school, um, uh, school uses. I mean, there's so many groups that use the gyms down there and storage is not secure between each program. Then on the next level up, so kind of the, the first floor of the building, um, the level that we're on now, this is existing, um, current, right around the corner from us in the high school wing, that's what you can see again. That's another mishmash of program over here. And you have a really amazing area back kind of tucked in this little, um, behind a secondary, uh, pathway to a really amazing maker space area that you have. I mean, some of the students don't even know that that exists. Um, and so, uh, going to our proposed, in phase one, we will have addressed the cafeteria down on this level. The, we will have addressed chorus and really creating that music suite, the entrance way. And so as part of phase two, after that, looking at that high school wing to really prioritize the, uh, the street-facing classrooms as classroom spaces and to better organize your special education spaces that are on this level. So a lot of the special education spaces are just in classrooms, but don't necessarily need the classroom size use. So creating breakout spaces, resource room spaces, and really opening up the entrance into the maker space area, which will also now be adjacent to your cafeteria. So having a little display case over there and, and really having that be part of kind of the, the formal, um, uh, pathways in, uh, off of the high school wing. Uh, this is also moving facts up next to, um, the daily living skills, which is a good share of resources as well. Then on the next level up, so that's the entrance level of the high school, right? The, the second floor of the building or third floor of the Washington wing. Um, this is our existing. And you can see, a, a lot of this works generally well. It, you know, we'll have, um, we will then be reprogramming the, the Washington wing. And so the Washington wing, uh, central area is where we've relocated some of that program from the, from the ground floor level to create a central, uh, counseling and guidance suite for the middle school adjacent to the high school's counseling and guidance suite. And same thing, a central space for middle school art adjacent to high school art. So you really are sharing resources between those programs and bringing to the TV studio up to that level as well. The third phase would be the Washington addition. So after that reshuffling, being able to extend and add your offices and your breakout spaces and add more classrooms for the, um, for the middle school. So this is a need that's a current need. And we're still not, you know, because of this phased approach, not looking to really address that until the third phase of, of this kind of master plan. Um, and in that, you would redo the, redo the play yard as well, have the opportunity to, to look at that. Um, that allows you to gain classroom spaces, to move some of your math classes that are in the basement level of the Washington wing that are, you know, very heavily used by the largest kids in the middle school and some of the smallest classrooms in the middle school, up to new classroom spaces that are really adequately sized for them. And, uh, and add areas for necessary program as well. Um, and then your language classrooms really become the classrooms at the bottom level of that Washington wing. And then phase four are interior refinements that can really be done at any time. They're not necessarily tied to a timeline, but, um, but interventions that we see as being really useful to the building. The most major one, creating those breakout spaces for the high school. So the high school wing and the high school corridor have locker alcoves that are really underutilized. The high school students don't use their lockers. And a lot of the time, high school students are seated on the floor in the locker alcoves. And this, it's been this way since I was in high school here more than 20 years ago.
Even in the winter for coats?
Yes.
Yeah, they hold them, they carry them.
So, um, so we've looked at the locker areas as breakout spaces, formalizing them as breakout spaces for the second and third floor of the high school level. So creating more glazed, uh, openings as well for these, which bring some lightness to, um, to your hallways, uh, to potentially introduce a new ceiling plane that just brings kind of a central point to the high school wing as well. Um, and really helps you gain programmatic space that is now being used in hallway spaces, right? Breakout areas for classes are generally kind of in hallway spaces, which they shouldn't be. Um, and then we also thought about the building and you are going to be living with this building for a long time. And I mean, this is a beautiful, robust building. It is built well, um, and it will serve the district for decades to come. But how do you modernize the building, um, in its existing form? And so we looked at kind of just the entrance into the classrooms and really trying to modernize those. So something that could be implemented at every classroom entry to create a little, a modern little portal, wood portal and glazed side light, um, just to help introduce some, um, some contemporary kind of updates to an existing building. And again, these are, these are implementations that can be done at any time. And also just thinking about guidelines for classrooms as well, just outlining that as well. This was part of programming. We kind of looked at the, the current and future way to how we want to use classrooms and just outlining the guidelines for that and what, how that would be implemented within existing classrooms. So tables and places of desks, flexible layout, updated technology, access to outlets, um, smart boards, hanging material areas, um, and that, that widened entry door. And thanks for bearing with us.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I'm going to ask for questions. Any initial questions for Leonard and Rena?
I think you've laid a lot on us.
Yes, thank you for this.
I mean, I know for me, just, and I'm the first one to say I don't have good spatial reasoning, so you'll forgive this question. But when it comes to like especially the middle school, the thing that really presents is that they have, there's so much issues of it feeling crammed and there's not good flow. And so in terms of like the images that you've shared with us and kind of the alcoves for the lockers, would that be, again, I'm struggling to envision it. Would it be that they would be located some on the second floor and some on the third floor? But would it make it then that it's further from the students to get to their locker and then get to the classroom? I'm just asking because they have such short, uh, passing time. So I'm just wondering about the space in terms of like right now where they are adjacent to their classrooms and how it would be in this envisioned form.
So the, the locker areas that we're proposing kind of create central hubs. Um, and in speaking preliminarily as well to some, um, to teachers about it, our experience at other schools as well, having that, that hub allows you to know that this is kind of like your home base to go to and also allows your students to better program their day as well because they'll be able to go to their hub, kind of think about the next classes that they have to go to. And maybe instead of every time between classes or every two times between classes, be able to plan for that a little bit better because they have the time and space and location to be able to do that. Instead of rushing between hallways where they're getting bumped into and, you know, feel rushed out of there as well.
I, I had the same question as you did. It's like, how many lockers in the hub? Um, and yeah, do you like, how mu, and like, what's the square footage? Because it seems like, I'm just trying to imagine all the children in there at once. And the chaos that could ensue.
I think it just replaces the lockers on the, um, Washington wing floor, like it wouldn't. Where the fifth and sixth grade lockers are, remain is where they are.
All the other ones.
Yeah, it's just replacing that.
We are, we are gaining, we are gaining a few more. It's, yeah.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, it's not the fifth and sixth grade lockers.
So you would keep those that are currently existing. So that, so that hallway would still though then be a little bit crammed.
From, no, from the second floor hallway, those would be, those would be moved and replaced in this central hub.
Like where the science rooms are.
So.
Those are the ones they're talking about.
With the leaving, the pressure where the lockers are currently, uh,
With the leaving, the pressure where the lockers are currently, move those out and then at the end where it's connected to the bridge on the second floor will create, you know, a kind of grouping of space so that people, when you're going to your locker, you're at the end of the building, you know that you go bridge or, you know, leave. That way you take the pressure off the hallway because that's where you go in and out of the classroom.
And that's, so this is proposing 248 double T O lockers on the second floor and then 90 on the third floor.
So the Farragut wing lockers, we're not, that's not in this mix.
Correct. That's what I was trying to.
I'm going to lean on four years times 365 days of walking this building. This is a highly optimal approach because the jam-packed hallways are what you're going to address. You know, is it ideal where we are with quality of lockers in Farragut? No, not at all, let's be clear. But at least space-flow wise, these are very good questions, they've figured that out.
Okay. Go ahead. No, no, go.
I have a question, I guess about the flow. This is the right page that I was actually looking at. Across from the reddish color, this alcove lock, that's floor-to-ceiling lockers?
The rendering, no, you can see in the rendering on the left, it's a, you know, it's like.
Like eight feet or something?
Yeah, it's, yes.
Particularly this area, it seems like an area of like congregation and that would have to be monitored by a school aide or something.
We already have, we already do monitor.
Yeah.
If that's a question, yes.
Is that like an extra, you know, it just seems like to me, this is an area that students are going to notice that during in-between time or bathroom time, this is an area they can kind of tuck away in. I don't know if that's a constant issue that you're dealing with, but whereas all the other locker areas through the diagram seem very open, like the one across the, to the right, seems very open and very easy to walk around. I know if I wanted to do something wrong as a student, this is the exact spot in the school that I would go to.
We already have that problem.
Yeah.
We have it in the high school. Mr. Kleiman has noticed a bunch of places. And we actually, almost where that would be fixed, we had that same problem because you come across, right before you go across the bridge out of the middle school towards the athletic wing, that is.
That's true.
That's a, that's a blind corner.
Yeah.
For the exact issues you're talking about. And in the existing building, we are very much attentive to the monitoring and adding to that and all the rest. So we're right on, excellent question. Let me open with the excellent question, and we're really working on that. Back curvature, if we have open classrooms there, if that stays, that helps mitigate the exact concern you're raising, which we've already been trying to manage.
But don't we have to give students spaces where they can do things?
I kind of have that feeling as well of, I mean, come on. I mean, we don't, we don't want this to feel like prison.
Right. There's also the, yeah, this little bridge that we're showing right now filled with lockers is something that we went back and forth internally on whether or not that should be filled or not. I mean, that gives another, it gives another entrance into here, both for eyes and just to kind of make it more open and not a circuitous space. So it's kind of a give and take between the number of lockers and having that openness as well. But that, that's also why we kind of left that as something that could be there or couldn't, or doesn't have to be there with lockers as well.
And the other thing, you know, that corner, because it's no longer a classroom, has a lot of natural light. And so we show some benches, which I think fosters students to really kind of feel like they can take a break, get something, you know. Sight lines, I agree, we'll study that as well. But I just think that, you know, they don't have any places other than the floor to sit. So something where they know they can go there certain periods, grab a book, grab a snack, sit down, you know, talk to a friend, and then go on to wherever they have to go. So to have that in the Washington wing, I think it's, it's much better than having it in the hallway. Because the hallway has no natural light and everything is given to the classrooms. So you just get the door and you're like, okay, all right, I'll probably go to the next class.
So I want to thank, I feel like you've given us an enormous amount to digest, but really interesting, I think. And I love what you said, Rena, about the building itself, which I think is true of many things that are built in Hastings years ago. And I love how you sort of took the building and used it. And a couple of things really stand out to me. One is thinking about light, which I think is fabulous, the way you've done that. Even placement of some of the bathrooms, very thoughtfully done, I think. I wasn't sure where you put the swimming pool.
Underneath the coo cafeteria.
And, and you know, and serious, and I think I missed this when you were talking about it, the locker rooms, is that included in this?
Yeah. That's like such an exciting part is having a female athlete that can address it.
That's part of.
And some more basketball courts, maybe?
That's part of the second phase reshuffle as well, is addressing those.
So as a parent of three kids, and two in middle school and one in high school, the cafeteria situation is very exciting. So thank you for rendering that so beautifully. And I think it really fixes a huge issue right now across the middle and high school. One issue that I love that there's 25% more space and there's air and there's all these nice entry points. One piece of it I think I began to understand too is just like the excess of getting food. And I know this may sound kind of nitty gritty, but are there going to be like two food stations? Like how is it going to be so all these kids can get through and get their food? Because I'm always hearing about, I only have 10 minutes to eat lunch.
Yeah, so what we've, what the existing condition is right now in the cafeteria is you go into two separate rooms within the cafeteria to, for the service line. And so that in and of itself is rather inefficient. And so what we've done is created a food service area that, or a kitchen area, right? That would be here, and separate the kitchen and cooking area from the food service line. So that those are adjacent to each other, but it's not like you're entering into the kitchen area to pick up your food. So this white bar over here represents the food service area where all the food would be laid out. I mean, obviously, this is a very high level that would have to get into much more detail with kitchen consultants and whatnot about exactly how, you know, how to partition that. But really, the flow is meant to be all around this cafeteria in the central space as well. So you're flowing directly past the service line. There could even be a break in the center of the service line where you're going from two areas as well. So that was something that we definitely wanted to resolve with this too.
Thank you.
Yep.
So about the design for the new doors, and you have the big window on the side. From my understanding, we have covers for the small windows in our doors now. How would the larger window, could that possibly be a liability if they're like, in worst-case scenario, to be a school shooting?
Yeah, it's a great question.
So this is, it's something that we put in the Hillside addition as well, having those side lights, and we often do these at a lot of schools as well. And it's, again, that balance in play. And so often you have blackout shades installed at those side lights. So that's the visual protection. But 99, hopefully 100% of the time, right, this is going to be an amenity and this is going to be something that you really like. So the size of that side light is also sized so it's not too large that it becomes, you know, difficult to bridge with any sort of shading, with any sort of protection. But it's something that really helps to kind of improve the classroom experience, yeah.
Oh, it's an excellent question to ask for all your.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
So I really appreciate your attention to, lots of schools make these adjustments now, and you can do it in very safe ways. And it's scary what I have to know as a superintendent these days, but there are ways to have glass that you're not going to get through. You're trying, basically you need to buy about four minutes. The level of knowledge I have on this stuff is not happy knowledge.
Yeah, the interlayers within the glass that make it very hard to penetrate through.
Only five or six minutes.
And in that little rendering, the glass, you can get special film that you can't see through, you just see light. So again, you wouldn't, you don't have to see directly as you would through there. And we can also supplement with blackout shade or roller shade as well.
I'm sorry you have to think about that.
I know.
And that you can't just enjoy the light. I wanted to, I really enjoyed when you came in June and shared your analysis. I found it had so much personalized, you know, detail from the students, which I really appreciated. And I, you know, in a public school, I don't feel always happens where, you know, you did the student interviews and teacher interviews. And I have two middle schoolers, so I feel like I'm always interviewing them and they're always giving me feedback. And my, so I have an eighth grader and my son said, oh, sure, right when I left Hillside, they built this addition. And now I'm leaving Farragut and they're fixing up Farragut. So I will share that you're also doing stuff for the high school. My daughter, who's a seventh grader, is like really impacted by the lack of modernity in the building and the heaviness of it. And she talks about it often, she, you know, she really, and, and I feel like this type of project will absolutely affect the students' experience. And I wish it wasn't so expensive, but, you know, some people in the community say, but does it have to be state-of-the-art? Do we really need state-of-the-art? But it's beautiful and I mean.
And when does a taxpayer want to pay for it? And also, when was the last time we had a major addition to this complex?
Right.
I see. So I mean, it's.
Well, that's not true.
1975 was the gym.
No, 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 but we did the upstairs.
The auditorium. We did the auditorium and the high, I mean, it wasn't additions. But there's been work done here.
But like sizable change.
Yeah.
But all that's to say, I really appreciate your work and I think it can be quite impactful on the well-being of the students. Thank you.
I think that was echoed not just by the students but by the faculty as well, who do an incredible job at Hastings. I mean, Hastings has really amazing, amazing faculty. But to hear from them and to hear their experience of the building and what they've had to kind of overcome to keep their level of education here with kind of degrading, you know, facilities in some senses in terms of how to modernize teaching, that was something that was very evident in our faculty interviews as well.
I do think it was also instructive to see that evolution from 1902 to 1989, to see how generationally people have made investments because the needs of the population obviously also evolved, you know, students moved into the building. And so I think one of the things that, and that burden rests with us, you know, as we like have these conversations, is to understand what's appropriate, you know, to meet the needs of our students as they currently exist and what they need. And obviously, in consultation with what all the parameters and expectations of the state are. So I really thank you for the comprehensive work that you did back in May and June and now, you know, giving us this presentation because it gives us a lot to chew on.
Yeah, I thank you as well. I mean, there's no word that does it justice, but it was really lovely to see it. And I, you may not remember, but in fact, when Hillside opened, we had a brief conversation and I was telling you that I had taken a course in college that was sort of, does our architecture matter? And it was kind of the question we walked in, you know, does it matter what kind of space you inhabit? And I won't go into the whole thing, but it was a fascinating course. And when I look at this, I feel like it's fundamentally changed what the school is for the people that are here, students, staff, faculty. And also, really, truly, I think it's going to change the role of the school in the community. And so it's, you know, on all marks, from the outlets to that. It's a great job, so thank you. Thank you very much.
I agree. I think I love kind of the way that you can use the entrance so differently and they get the in and out to the cafeteria, I like that concept. One quick question on the entrance, the new proposed entrance, does that eliminate parking in front of there? Does that, it's just in there?
No, we're in front of the, no, we're only taking about 15 feet away, you know, from the existing wall. So there's, there's a photo, there's planters, so those parking spots would remain.
At the very last slide, you can see there's a rendering of the.
There's one up there. Yeah, if you look at where.
Look up now.
So the roadway is out where the mouse is. All right, and this is a new plant, this is, planter area is kind of in place of where the planters are now. It's a smaller planter area, but the roadway stays intact.
And, you know, we think that this roadway, which is, you know, the loop that was always there, can be utilized much better now and safer for parent drop-off, right? Like, you don't have to have parking, maybe the parking is on the other side, it's two lanes, so you can have your bus drop-off, you know, you can have your, you know, parent drop-off. And that allows, I think, a much safer way for people to get to the lobby, right? You're not just parking, you haven't to cross the street. You could drop people off and go park wherever the, you know, street parking that there are. So we're reutilizing what was already built for you, which was the drop-off zone of roadway away from the main, you know, street.
And just to confirm, because we had heard from some community members about the, I call it the place space, the recess yard, because my son loves it, but really, the only space that's being sort of reclaimed for this project is this courtyard out here. All that other space will remain the same.
Correct, yeah.
That's great and helpful.
And you still have usable courtyard.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's.
It actually maximizes.
Our goal with that is to actually activate the courtyard even more than it's activated now. I mean, I know from some of the students how often they go out there. I remember often, you know, how often, and it was like twice a year, right? And to think about how we can really activate this amazing asset of the building and create some life down there as well is something that we really hope to do.
Thank you. No questions?
I have one question. Of course. About the phasing. So phase one is the entryway and the cafeteria. I think it's amazing for school pride and belonging, you know. But one thing that you said too was, phase three was an area that is one of the largest needs, which is instructional spaces being redesigned. So how much instructional space is being created in phase one versus two and three? And when would phase one end and then instructional space would be, you know, looked at and built and ready for a growing school?
So in saying that, I didn't mean to say that we weren't addressing instructional spaces in phase one. We very much are addressing instructional spaces in phase one, and that's the reprogramming of the, the third floor of the cafeteria. So you're, you're gaining an entire floor, right, of instructional space on one of your wings.
The repurposing of that space two is phase one?
That's, that's in the, yes, that's in phase one as well.
So it's what, another 3,000 square feet?
That was, that was more than that.
4,600.
That was 4,600 square feet. So, and as part of phase one, also having the chorus room down here. So there's some of that reprogramming work that happens, but it was essentially saying, even with that amount, right, it's still not addressing the full scope of the needs for the growing school. And so that's why phase three is introduced, to address the full scope of needs of, for the growing school.
Does it also make sense architecturally to do that, this interior space before you work out? Like, are you working, it seems like you're working the centerest and like working out from there?
Yeah.
It would be like the fastest way to do it?
Great. It's also, it's also helping to establish the hub for the school as the first move and then bridging out from there.
I mean, my sense, and I've, and I know, I want to talk about next steps, I think you gave me that hint, which you can do in a second. But having spent a little more time with this than others, I think a very powerful explanation just then, and I use the word powerful on purpose, of what phase one is, because phase one will deal with the instructional space issue, it'll deal with the crowding issue, and it'll deal with flow. And some might say, the facade is the facade, hey, big deal, we don't need a new, no, no, this is deep into the, you know, we do, if we can figure out how to do that entrance way, it makes everything else logical for the flow within, which will then also help justify, gosh, this new cafeteria, which opens up all this space up here. So phase one is quite robust. So the exact right questions as to what it would get. And we had asked a couple weeks ago, they move fast, we had asked, it was actually, it was last week, about phasing and came back with this sort of phasing, which makes sense. Because the reality is, and this is now a next step, we all have to be going to school in the building while we're figuring this out. And many of us have lived that. So that's, you know, a next step to come. Do you want me?
Our slides don't have some of the phasing.
We will update this with the total phasing as well, because I think we issued those as two different packages and presented it as one presentation. Yes.
I mean, there may be more questions now, but let me just try and be a facilitator, if I dare do that. The sprint I did through that document in the beginning is to let you see where we are in a timeline. So certainly in the next board meeting, the 22nd, we're not having a presentation. So that could be a time for you, you have a couple weeks to reflect, absorb this, get the updated phasing document. get the updated phasing document. But as you saw from the timeline, PBD, they're not slowing down. They're going to keep working, refining. I, my sense is they're hearing enough today to keep refining, looking at certainly phase one and that. And then on the sixth of November, you begin to hear about the athletic field side of this whole arrangement and also hear more on the BCS. I think I would suggest, and this, this is a public meeting, the public's learning, you're giving feedback, I would suggest somewhere after the sixth, once you've heard on the athletic field side, that then we think about other outreach more directly and specifically to the community. I mean, I really think it's important that the board, in public meetings here, about these concepts, give critique, ideas. We go back in, refine a little bit, and then can share a bit more. But I would think some point after November sixth, we'll start to do more robust rollout of what's emerging.
We're, we're on track to come back at the end of November. I think it's the nineteenth year of board meeting with cost estimation on these as well. So that's really our focus in the next, in the next month, is to work with the construction manager on constructibility, on, on, on the phasing as well and cost testing.
Can I ask a question actually about that? So it looks like between the BCS and what's here, we have enough to move forward with the construction manager. Is that something that we're...
Well, that's something, yeah, I mean, I would, I'll talk about that. We need to do an RFP to bring on the construction manager. We had done one previously last year, but then we ended up rejecting those bids because we weren't in a position where we needed that service at that time. But we will need to bring in somebody at this point in time, because in order to move forward, we need to, like, especially when you're, when you're just doing some interior renovations, architects can provide some really good estimates on things, but the constructibility and all the rest for additions and the field work will require us to bring in a construction manager. So at the next meeting, I will be presenting to you a proposal, once I do, like a quick RFP, and, or if not, if I don't have the proposal, it'll be the, the session after that. But currently, we're going to engage with a construction manager just to do some first phase, phasing and as we're doing the RFP, because our purchasing policy does allow us to spend a certain amount of money, you know, up until before the RFP. And we do need to kind of, just to kind of keep things moving, we may need to bring them on for a week or two while I'm issuing the RFPs for this, this work, which we anticipate to be, I'm not quite sure yet, until I get with the architects in terms of what they really need in terms of pricing and, but I think we feel comfortable that we'll still be, as Rita said, on track for their next presentation, once we bring them on. Yes, it does. I mean, we're on a pretty aggressive timeline, but that was, I needed to bring it to the board to say, like, you know, this is what we're going to be needing to do now. We need to bring a construction manager onto this project.
I think we'll also have to come up with, or maybe you've already thought about it, a timetable of how we're going to be more public and have public meetings.
That's in that first document I shared, and LAN is very expert at guiding us through that, so.
I think in that timeline, it was a January updated renders. So these are, right, master planning level renders, when you go out to public, kind of having the next level of renders specifically for whichever portion goes in the next bond, right? So hopefully for phase one, we would want to have kind of more public-facing renders as well. And so that, I think, LAN had outlined January for that kind of next level of development to be public.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. Deeply appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on, Ella, thank you for being so patient.
Thanks. Joe, Joe is here. Joe joined us today, just in case there was any...
Oh, thank you, Joe.
So, Joe, thank you for sitting through it. I didn't know how long it was going to be. Does anybody have anything for Joe? Because then he could just, if there's any questions related to the buildings?
A question for Joe, we wanted to hold a glass.
Use your microphone.
Question with the renderings related to the glass, you see that as being an additional cost on heating, cooling, et cetera?
No, I think glass today, I mean, the architects probably tell you better than I can, that insulation, you know, is, is better on glass today than you're buying, you know, years ago, you know? So there's different quality and I'm sure that they would consider that when they're...
Did you say cleaning or heating?
Heating.
Oh, heating, okay, that's awesome.
For both, keeping in the cooling and also keeping in the...
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Ella, thank you.
We're good. Thank you.
All right, back to you, Ella.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I'd like to start off with one of the hottest topics of conversation, which is the phones. So after a little impromptu discussion last meeting, word has got, word has gotten around that everybody...
Oh, sorry, yeah.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, no, you're doing great.
Just so that everybody in the world...
Yeah. So I'd like to start off with one of the hottest topics of conversation, which is the phones. And after a little impromptu discussion last meeting, word has gotten around and everybody is ready and willing to let their, to tell their opinions on phone use in the school building. Our new principal, Mr. Kleiman, came to Senior Lopez's room last Wednesday morning and talked to the student union about phone policies and options. He guided a very open conversation and there were many thoughtful arguments on both sides. We'll continue talking tomorrow morning, but I just wanted to shout out everyone on the SU and Mr. Kleiman for being willing to have such an accessible discussion. We also have seven wonderful performers who have been selected to go to Area All-State. This is a huge, huge accomplishment and students are only considered if they scored a ninety-eight to a hundred percent on their NISMA performances. So immense congrats to seniors Sophia Eliasi, Johanna Nolan, and Kodali, and sophomores Zoe Verduin, Ruben Belasco, Jay Warner, and Chio Christ. So after a long weekend off of Rosh Hashanah, we are now back in school. And although we don't have to wait long for another longer weekend, since next Monday, the fourteenth, schools and offices will be closed for Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. Also, this Thursday, Max Stossel from Social Gathering will be presenting an assembly on the way social media is designed to be addicting and distracting, while also highlighting its impact and providing tools that can be used to compact the addictive factor. A separate presentation will be held that same day for parents at seven PM in the Hastings High School Auditorium. Both high school and middle school parents are invited to attend. That is all the updates we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on, we're going to open up for public comment. If anybody would like to comment? Oh, okay. Moving on to update district highlights from Bill Mcursie, Dr. Mcursie.
So, once again, we have the new version of the old way of doing things. So I think we're in the third run of these. You can, some other day, coach me on PowerPoints, I don't read them. If you want me to start reading them, I will, but I think you all are better at reading than I am at talking, so I'm just going to kind of hit some highlights. But first off...
Got to read this one.
I will read this one. Actually, I'll let each of you read it, because it celebrates all of you in the School Board Recognition Week, which we are about to go into. So we're ahead of ourselves here, so you get an extra time to celebrate. I'll take no credit for the beautiful artwork and imagery here, the lighting and all of that, but please, from all of us, receive a thank you for, for what you do.
Thank you.
For all of us.
Very nice.
We greatly appreciate that. And Ella left, but I was, I, I believe in full voice for our students, so when starting that hot topic of phones, I was waiting for the, "We don't want a ban!" As opposed to, we're engaged in a discussion.
That's great.
With Mr. Kleiman, our new principal, guiding us through things. And so I think for you as a board, let me give you a big compliment. You obviously have some very strong feelings about this and some wisdom and sense. You are giving space to students to think and talk about this. I think they know if they come back and say, "Just let us be," that may not be the right answer, but they understand. And I want to compliment you all for, for giving them that space, because many school boards might not. And I really appreciate you doing that. National Custodian Day, Joe left, but his team does a magnificent job, so much so. And you saw the history of the building today, which should underscore more the incredible work that's getting done here. And then the new work, the work on the newer facility in newer parts of Hillside, they truly go twenty-four, seven. I think there's a phrase in here that so often I've seen one struggling with something and they're, and the team jumps in. So they really have a wonderful esprit de corps, which many of us appreciate. And they also make fun of the superintendent, which I really appreciate. It's also, it's principals...
It's a team of three.
Month. So there is the team of three, and I think the words speak to what's happening here. You really do now, in this group of three, have a, a team, they're working together, they're spending time on their own, they're spending a lot, with the three of them, they really view themselves as a team, they're working, spending a lot of time, Melissa Zemansky. And they are truly deep in their sense of young people at each of their buildings, that grade level, and they also are very much proven instructional people, but in the sense of that full learning. So we're optimistic as to where this will head. Things have settled down in terms of Assistant Principal Dan here for, for Scott. Andy's about at the end of November to go into a several-week transition. We, that's narrowed down. It was going to be maybe two months without a backup, but it'll just now be about two or three weeks. I know there is some nervousness about that, but we're looking ahead and planning and being ready for that bit of a gap when Melissa Hardesty moves into retirement before Ms. Ware is here. Classroom look-in, we told you we do this as a theme, this is actually a club look-in. I think it's topical and timely. I think it's a correct celebration of the diversity of our students and how they come together with a wee bit of faculty guidance, but really on their own, to honor and celebrate who they are and to share that out with the entire school community. One thing I like about what the, the combination of Melissa DiLiberi with Cara Tumoy is doing is we're keeping the photos now on our website, very fresh, they're turning over, and some of these photos are showing up there. We had not planned to bring back athletics, but when an amazing runner's in our midst, she makes sure we bring back athletics. This is a big deal. This is a big accomplishment. And that spirit you see, you see around the building, just many of you know, know Caitlin better than I do, but there she is. More music, more accomplishments with who we are here in Hastings. Too many words on this slide, so don't worry, I won't read it to you, but I think it's very important and going right down the middle, an understanding and need to have our students address a very definite, upon us, current event. Someone said, "Oh, will they be nervous if they're talking about the presidential election?" I think they should be nervous if they're not talking about it. If they're talking about it from a particular vantage point, a particular candidate, that, that might, that would be an issue. But this is, we have to have our students talking and understanding these issues. So this speaks in some detail to what's going on in this particular classroom. And I really do believe that is authentic learning with all those hands in the air.
Just going to say, it's a lot of, a lot of hands raised.
More, another look-in, first grade classroom, you know, some real, I think, engagement and yes, cuteness and also engagement, engagement there, learning about algorithms and kind of how those are a part of who we are, like it or not. This is a wee bit self-serving, but yes, I do guest reading. Today, I was back in my first, second grade stop, and it was, it was nice. I said, "How many of you I read to in kindergarten?" All the hands went up. First grade, all the hands went up. Second grade, all the hands now went up. And that's the run of books. Only one book up there, I insist on, the rest, the teachers pick. So the second grade teachers picked Duck and Goose and said, "Please bring, come back with..." First grade, excuse me, again, so you can read better than I can talk. But all those are picked by, so the entire first grade gets Duck and Goose. And it's about a twenty, thirty-minute visit with turn and talk, which is definitely a very strong method amongst our students. And then the only I pick is The Napping House. So I've read that, I'm not joking, probably in a thousand kindergarten classes. And it's a wonderful book for what may surprise you at the end and then going back to figure out. I'm not going to give away the surprise. And then the teachers this year, in the fourth grade, picked the book to the right, and I am not good with my Hawaiian pronunciations, so they worked with me last week and put up with me. But this is what's going on, and somebody stuffed this photo in here, but that's last year, don't worry, that's not last week, that's snow. And the words here matter. Melissa D. wrote these words. Thank you, Melissa, too generous. But it is a chance to connect with the students. And I'm terrible with names, great with faces, and now fifth graders I have read to, so I begin to see them up here. So it is a nice, nice moment. I complimented before, I have worked for a board, I'm in a public meeting, I'm about to say it, a board member once said to me, "Why are you spending time guest reading on our classes?" It was not here, don't worry. But I thought, if I'm getting asked that question, someone does not understand. So there is the rest of our week, well, not our weeks, a couple of weeks or so. So, all right, again, this is posted, it's there, you can go back and study it, but I hope that this kind of...
Great, due next.
New version of the old, old version of the new is a helpful way to present.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mcursie. Any questions?
Oh, sorry, there's a class listening. Today, in the second grade class, to get them back from the turn and talk, they have a monthly saying. The monthly saying today in October is hocus pocus, and then they say, so you say, I say hocus pocus, and then you all say time to focus.
I love it.
And I try that with the principals or the board, and the teachers lit up and said, "We're going to watch the tape." Ready? Hocus pocus.
Time to focus!
Certain second grade class now, very happy.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry.
That's actually great. That is great.
Thank you, Dr. Mcursie. Moving on to administrative reports from Dr. Zemansky. Anything you want to pull out? I saw something in here.
I just want to say, thank you. We have a lot of great committee work going on. We have a lot of great inquiry work that's been started through our curriculum inquiry as connected to the portrait. So I will point out that we have a tri-state steering committee that is about to convene. We're planning for an April twenty-ninth through May first, visit on cultural competence, so that will get rolling soon. All of other committees are in full swing. Professional Learning Committee had its second meeting today. We're deep into the design of superintendents' conference days, believe it or not, for next year already. We sent a survey out to gain some feedback on this year. We're looking forward to our March superintendents' conference day, the November one. We do have some light professional learning for certain units, TAs, aides, monitors. Our teachers will be in parent-teacher conferences, but we've been doing a lot there already. And we will be digging into the creation of our professional development plan that goes to New York State every year for approval and expanding our curriculum review cycle for future efforts. And we are working very hard to align everything to the portrait as well, which is where our Authentic Learning Committee folds in. That is our key area of focus for the portrait this year, while we're keeping our foot on the gas pedal for the other areas. This particular committee is working to ensure alignment between the portrait Authentic Learning Goals, talking through the intersections with curriculum work that's happening, and also faculty professional learning. So Amy, Scott, Andy, and I have been meeting to talk through how we are creating a coherent arc of understanding in a common language around authentic learning. And so that fell into our first faculty meetings, district-wide. Moving forward, we'll differentiate it based on the feedback from each building, because each building is in a separate space, but we are anchoring it with some of the indicators and best practices from the Buck Institute's project-based learning. So we are working through that, and the Authentic Learning Committee is giving terrific feedback, restorative practices. We are working on feedback and also planning for professional learning focused on building community circles, so proactive approaches to building community, and also reactive approaches, so what happens if there's a harm that's been done, not just the disciplinary consequence, but how do we teach into it and how do we create that restorative piece? So that committee's been focused on that. Our Behavioral Charter Committee has been in action already. So last year, a lot of work was done around a draft behavioral charter, and we took an approach that the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence uses in terms of a charter of, of how we want to feel when we enter our environment, how do we want to behave to create the environment that we want culturally. And so now this iteration of that committee is taking the work that's been done and creating intersections with the attributes of the portrait to make sure that everything lines up and is connected. So that's the committee work that's been happening. We just actively started work with Diane Cunningham, the middle school ELA teachers, including fifth grade, who we did not leave alone on an island, because I know that historically work has been, you know, either six-eight or six-twelve, just because of the structure we have here, but we've looped in the fifth grade teachers too, and so they have begun their writing inquiry. I want to say thank you to Sarah Walters, who has been a tremendous instructional leader on behalf of the department. So a big thank you to Sarah and all the participants in that work. We've had but one session, and I will be providing more updates on that moving forward. But the work here was around initially trying to set the stage just to notice what it is we're currently doing, and the extent to which we have a coherent program, and the extent to which we're amplifying authentic learning opportunities. So those are the two key outcomes that we're hoping for, coherence and alignment with the portrait. And from there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of potential to enter the inquiry in different ways. So we started out by painting a picture of the units that are happening in each grade level, we did some, some gallery walks around that, really some big picture mapping, and then really reflected and shared what we learned, what questions emerged, and we took a lot of time to notice whether units of study were genre-based versus strategy-based in other places, to what extent are certain standards amplified, you know, are we emphasizing some over others, are they repeating through the years? So that work's begun, and it was really exciting and really fun, and it was, it was just a really fantastic day. So I want to say thank you to all of those teachers, and of course, we had restorative practices training in full swing. So we're only in the first six weeks of school, but things are moving, and I have to just say, big kudos to our educators who have really rolled up their sleeves and are working so synergistically. It's been a lot of fun.
It's great.
Wonderful to hear. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Semansky.
Yeah, it's great.
Moving on to Maureen Carbal, our business official, anything you wanted to add?
There was initially, we're gonna bring it to you next time, we wanted to give you an update of some of the cost shifts that we've been speaking to the last few meetings in terms of additional staff. And I think we initially, I'll just say this, but as we ended the year with that positive or increase of fund balance to 1.3 million, I know the board is aware, because we've been talking about it, but we'll bring it with the dollars now as they're emerging, we've had to add about four staff members, you know, that were not budgeted for this year. So very quickly, we can see those, you know, we're, we've been fortunate with the additional federal funding is really the driver, I didn't want to get into it, I mean, I know his presentation was tight, and I didn't mention at the time, but last year, the year before, a lot of the federal funds that we received through COVID were still running through 831 of this year. And the district, we received about two point, over $2 million with those funds over that period, so a lot of our fund balance the last few years was also driven by that, meaning that that was expenses we were able to pay out of the federal fund, which now no longer exists, so those now expenses we would pick up. So some of that was either monies that we recouped through, we actually got FEMA money this year, that was from the pandemic, so that was some of that additional income we received. So there were expenses we laid out years ago that we're now seeing some reimbursements, so some of that was driving those additional dollars, and that's a good thing, and that, and that's why when we have years where we're seeing the opposite happen, we're not as, you know, we feel, okay, we, you know, we have a little bit, we did, you know, last year being a little bit more of a positive year, if there are some of those, and we would have to, if it got to a point where we'd have to appropriate, what's called appropriate fund balance out of those funds to cover some of these expenses, you know, we're able to do so. So I think it's, you know, that, that's just the way it works in schools, you know, there's years where you have some positive errands, there's other years where, you know, you're finding it going in the other direction. But I think we looked, Bill and I looked at when we started to talk about the budget, which last year, I think was either late October, early November, but I think we may just start to kind of just bring you updates of like, kind of, this is what we anticipated, this is kind of where we are this year with some of our staffing, and then some other things that are emerging that may not necessarily be for this year, but we're already finding some of those things. We've kind of already created an internal list of, of as those things are either potential needs that are, that are kind of coming bubbling to the surface this year. So, and last thing, I think in the next meeting, we'll have another, not two full-time positions, but two positions that we'll also be adding at our next meeting. And again, based upon some new enrollees, based upon nice, nice, right, am I saying that word right, testing, and also for, driven by MTSS, because now that the MTSS is in full swing at Hillside, then things such as OTPT and speech are now, you know, there's maybe more students that now are needing those services, so because of that, we're gonna have to increase some FTEs there, or a part of an FTE there.
Excellent.
Yeah, so just keep your.
Any questions, comments about that? Nope, okay. Moving on to business items, are there any questions or comments regarding business items one through four?
I thought the FEMA money was all going to my rooms.
So your motion to approve business items one through four?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to placement services for CSC and CPSC, are there any questions or comments regarding our placement services for CSC and CPSC?
Now.
Is there a motion to approve our placement services for CSC and CPSC?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to personnel, as the consent agenda, are there any questions or comments regarding our appointments or amendments? Is there a motion to approve our appointments and amendments?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Catherine was the second.
It was like a tie.
Catherine was the second.
Okay. All right. Sorry, I'll slow down a little bit. Moving on to minutes, these would have been from our September 24 meeting, are there any questions or comments regarding our minutes? Is there a motion to approve our minutes from the September 24 meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, this is a Spanish language proposal for the trip to Colombia, to Cartagena. This is just as an FYI to the board.
Yeah, I mean, Melissa may want to step in a little bit, Semansky, she gets credit for crafting a policy that brings this to the board, that policy is the board agreed was, the superintendent and the principal make this decision, so it's here for you as an FYI. We really do think it's important you have the FY on it. Interesting for the history of the policy was Steve Lopez, who called the question for a trip, which prompted then Melissa Semansky to go back and dig into what's the best way to provide and allow for these opportunities. Sometimes I have to go to my past, I was superintendent in Greenwich when I had to cancel a trip due to threats in Germany, you can probably figure out the date, and we had a lot of unhappy families because they got stuck with covering it. So this policy does protect us, so some of us learn from history. Melissa Semansky gets credit for the policy being here, you all adopting it. We're very pleased about this proposal. The main point that we keep coming back to is these are not inexpensive. Mr. Lopez has a lot of thought on how to potentially defray costs, it is very difficult, though, because it's a lot of effort for not a lot of money raised for the costs. I still approved it, you have a memo here, which is very helpful from Andy Kleiman as new principal endorsing this in a thoughtful way. So there's been a good coming together on this. Final comment, then maybe Melissa might want to add something, is it is international travel, so not surprisingly a lot of energy in our world language department, they are organized and sort of pacing.
It's great.
They're not all on top of each other with trips. So, but I don't know, Melissa, if you want to add anything or if there are questions.
I just, I think it's best outlined in the memo that, that Senor Lopez wrote, actually. So you'll see one from me with enthusiasm, you'll see one from Andy Kleiman with enthusiasm, but in terms of the details and the itinerary, daily language lessons lasting three hours, half-day excursions to culturally significant sites. And, you know, we are thinking about this in a way to enhance, just very, very naturally, not only knowledge about culture and knowledge of language, but also to enhance cultural competence and just to understand the intersections of our world. And providing students with opportunities to do that, we find is of deep value based on the feedback that we're getting from students and also the memories that people come back with for many years to come. We made sure that we were fully aligned with the travel policy, and we, we work with a travel agency. Stephen is a veteran in taking students abroad, he has done that in Hastings, he has done that outside of Hastings with international excursion, so there's a high level of trust, a high level of expertise. And again, planning this trip well in advance was partly based on feedback that we, you know, we received quite naturally through living it with reopening travel, but also in discussions at the board table, thinking about how we provide greater opportunity, a longer runway for fundraising or anything that needs to happen to be supportive for families.
How many kids?
I am not sure if he has a cap on this yet.
What grades can it tell us?
It's for high school.
Eleven, twelve?
Yep.
Or the Spanish, four and five.
Yep.
So it's.
Yeah.
This takes a lot of time for a teacher to put together, and it is such an amazing itinerary, I just, I just, kudos to him, to the time and energy and dedication to it, and to everyone involved, like, it's not easily done, these types, I've gone and I've chaperoned these types of trips.
Yes.
They're not easy, but they're tremendous learning experiences, and that itinerary was fantastic. I wanted to go, so it's just wonderful.
I was interested from the price point perspective, that it was actually less than they spent going to Medida.
Yeah.
It was less expensive.
Yes.
And they're going further away, and it's for the same amount of time. So, I mean, I recall that for the Medida trip, they must have been somewhere between like 30 and 40 students who went, and so I wonder if the anticipation is that it'll be an equal number of students. And my question is just how they picked Cartagena, like Colombia in general.
Yeah, so I, I think there was an interest in going, I mean, obviously it was Spanish-speaking country, not going to the same place that they've been before, because it opens up another opportunity for students who have gone on one excursion to go on another excursion. But this is, I mean, it's, it's one of the, one of the countries, and, and the itinerary was strong, and also the immersive language program, so the connections that he makes to be able to make sure that students are gonna receive, you know, for him, the lens was really specific to the language instruction in addition to the cultural immersion. But I will say that going on these trips, you know, to your point earlier as well, it's done over a break, right? So, so again, kudos to our teachers for going, and they are giving up their break, they're not being additionally compensated for that, but they really value these cultural excursions, and having been on one, they are wonderful, joyful, special, and a lot of work. So it is, it is wonderful, and it is definitely work. And so I do want to say kudos to our world language department for continuing to keep the doors open for these things for students.
That's interesting, though, like, I mean, I guess I never thought about, are they compensated for this extra time and effort? I wish they could be.
They are not. We have in our policy, yeah, we do have in our policy that there, you know, it is not above and beyond, there's no additional compensation, so if people want to go with students abroad, that is because it is a labor of love, and it is something that they want to take students to see the world. And there is definitely value add to that, you know, it's very special as an adult to be traveling to another place, and at the same time, it definitely is, you know, it's not the typical February vacation, for example.
I wish we could do like a Schedule B, you know, or something. I'm always hoping to compensate our teachers for their time and effort, so just putting it out there.
Do you know what the ratio of the adults to students is typically? I remember the last time they had three adults.
Yeah, it depends. See, when there's a trip that, we, we were talking about this, we don't have a fixed ratio in our policy.
Okay.
And I actually, I quite like that, because I think each trip is different. So, for example, the Medida, Mexico trip, they were largely in one location, and that requires a different type of ratio than, for example, on the Italy trip, there was movement every few days. And so there were moments where a bus pulled up, and you have 20 kids getting on the bus, and there are three doors, and they aren't necessarily waiting for everyone to get on the bus, so having a smaller ratio allows the adults to be spread out, right? And so we plan for that. Whereas if they're going into an educational setting, maybe like a one to six, a one to 10 versus a one to three in a location that requires a little bit more of an active oversight or a heightened level of mentoring would be more relevant. So there is a little bit of expertise, and then, of course, because we go through a third party, that is in our policy because of insurance and making sure that we're being protective of students, of families, and of us, sometimes the ratio is defined by the travel agency that we go through. So I know ACIS is one to six, I want to say, but it depends, again, based on the need of the venue.
Thank you. Thank you all for the sort of thoughtful process details you mentioned.
Teresa's question, I'm sorry, do, do the teachers' trips get paid for by the school?
The teachers are covered.
Fully covered.
It is covered, yeah. It's, it's actually, you know, it's, it's included in whatever the per pupil cost is and the ratio offset, and again, that's the third-party vendor.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I like the idea of the early planning as a nod to like allow people to budget and kind of have a layaway plan.
Right.
About that.
That's a good point.
So that's a way.
Yes.
Yeah. They can work over the summer.
That's right, that's right.
And think about big fundraising.
Yeah.
Homegrown, things they might be able to do.
One of our world languages teachers, Ellen Driscoll, has been also pursuing some outside potential support, if someone is in a position and a bit more economically insecure and thinking about ways that we can partner to do something like that, or at least liaise, and then somebody does that independently. So we're vetting that, you know, even through our, you know, what's allowable versus not allowable. So we're, we're working through some of that, we're trying, we want to make sure that we have good access.
Yeah.
It's important to do that.
An exciting time to be a high school language student, that's all I can say. Keep on studying, kids, you know, keep on going.
So we want.
Yeah.
For a high school language teacher.
Yeah, exactly.
That's great, thank you. Moving on to second public comment, in the case that anybody might know, thank you, to agenda review. So the one thing we mentioned was that we're not gonna have a presentation on the bond, so it's gonna be an opportunity for us to sort of get into some of the aspects of it. Anything else that we're gonna be adding for?
Yeah, well, I think we should, Melissa D., we should be explicit and put that on our little, what I like to call the course plan, so under 1022, we'll add in, discuss the bond, we're also gonna add in, I think, some budget discussion, even though you have a budget calendar on the 6th, I think on the 22nd, we could talk about that headline, I think you're talking about the headline document you and I are putting together on the budget.
Yeah, and we can also then provide some, you know, like an update to what.
Yeah, basically on that, and just, you know, just, I'll be efficient, we're hearing a lot within the organization, you hope we would hear a lot and listen, about things that do need attention, whether we can afford it or not, so I, we, so new approaches, what are those headline points, let's not lose them, lose track of them. So I think giving you, the board, a sense of that, one, will help you understand, and it's gonna signal back inside that we are listening, whether we can resolve it.
Okay.
At least, you know, so I think we should add that in here explicitly. The 6th will be a busy meeting, you've got the Bosie's presentation, you have a Fieldmaster Plan presentation, that will not be as extensive, but it is significant, and so, and the budget calendar to talk about. So there may be some things we can do at our end to lighten the load in terms of our other reports to you, because that 6th will be a busy one for you.
The budget calendar is just really adopting it.
Yeah.
It's just really driven by legal dates, so it's not.
Do we anticipate that the RFP for the construction, the 22nd, or that's kind of later?
So you would be approving the outcome of that RFP, but I just wanted to, being it's not something we had, but like, that would be an example of something that we may either have to take money out of a appropriated fund balance, depending on like what we think the cost of that may be. So I'm trying to, prior to the RFP putting together, I, the last time I did a much more larger scope RFP was more of a generic one, and I felt as though it was like more than we needed, so I want to be able to like really, working with the architects over the next few days, be able to issue something that really is just giving them exactly the cost, like exactly what they need, which is, it's a little bit beyond estimating, because there is, when you do an addition, they look at like the constructability and different things, they have to kind of look at the existing building to really understand, like even just all the, you know, plumbing and the electric and all the rest, like beyond, when you're connecting something to an existing building to make sure that they have a good handle on that, as construction managers are experts on actual building, you know, so, so it'll be helpful, they'll have a much more accurate, it'll help us as we're like determining what gets into our final bond scope, so I think it is extremely important to bring it on. So I think it is extremely important to bring it on.
Yeah.
Now, I think, especially with the addition, that that does require, you know, having a construction manager on at this point in time. So my hope is to bring you something next week. If not the exact proposal that we'll be approving, at least I can give you a sense of the dollars that we think the cost will be for that service.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a question about, on November 6th, it says SW Bosie's Board Visit Presentation. Is that the slide deck on the shared, I don't want to say shared services, but it's different from that?
Yeah, this is an update that they've, they're going around to all of their member districts and presenting. It may get into some of the shared services. I'll talk with Harold a little more about what's here. But this was the date that was the best match, even though it's a little busy meeting for us.
Okay, so they're doing that in every district? Like, they're doing a road show?
Going out to each of their member districts.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And talking about Bosie's program.
Right.
We have, how many students of ours participate?
Well, we have, like, this year, we have 11 children that are participating in the Occupational Education Program. And then we also have other children that are placed there for like educational needs. So I think there may be maybe two, two or three in Special Education Bosie's programs. But the OCHAED, particularly this year, which that's a combination of gen ed students and special education students, some of them needed for their graduation requirement. But there were many, we averaged about like seven, but this was a higher number because I remember when we, we just got the bill. So that's why I know the number of that. So, but it is great. It's, I want to say per student might be like $18,000 for the Occupational Education Program, 18 and 19. But we do get aid back on those services, so. It's quite impressive what they do there. I will give it to them. They do an excellent job with those programs.
And this will be quite a, a piece of what we have there. I'd argue most important is the students, but there's a whole range of other programs, interactions we have. In fact, we were at a mandatory meeting today on the whole co-cert process. So all of our IT and all is highly dependent on Bosie's and Rick, all of our professional learning, required training for many of us on any certification, credential issues, all the rest. Today, both Andy and Dan were off. It required training somewhat tied to Bosie, somewhat not. But, you know, they're.
They manage all the athletics, like, all the athletic scheduling and referee. I mean, that in itself is, there are things in which they provide to smaller, you know, districts that we would never, you know, to take on.
This is their chance to come out and probably explain to a board directly.
Oh.
It'll be interesting.
That's nice.
And in the budget you'll vote on, there's a significant line item for Bosie's.
I bet.
All right.
Bosie's.
Moving on to Board of Ed comments. Feel free.
I would like to, there's two things I wanted to bring up. One is, I'm looking at this flyer. On Thursday, there's a forum, a candidate forum for village offices.
Hello. On Thursday at 6:00 PM in town, there's a forum for village candidates. And there's trustee candidates who are going to be asked questions as well as a village justice, Peter Colbert. And I bring this up because I was talking to, not, you know.
Colbert. Colbert, yeah.
Colbert, sorry, sorry. And we were, we were talking about how, even though it's Thursday, and right now it's Tuesday, it would be great to get some students there and to encourage some civic engagement. And Melissa, I was thinking I could share, like, just the email about it. And maybe you can share it with the social studies teachers in the high school and in the middle school. Maybe they could give extra credit to students who go and participate and listen and learn about what's happening on a local governmental level. So I'll share it. It's right at the community center.
At 6:00.
At 6:00 on Thursday. I think it would be awesome to have some high schoolers. So I'll share that. And then I also just, I just wanted to bring up seventh and eighth grade advisory. A bunch of community members reached out to me with like a triggered emotional response because last year was tricky for kids, for the mandatory advisory. And I would love for somebody to just talk about, maybe not tonight, but what's in store, how's it going to be different? And what's this plan? Like, when does this end? Does it ever end? That kind of thing.
Never ends.
Yeah, well, I sent a note back to the board. So it's important I put it here in the public. So it's a really good question, came in today from a couple of you. I can work with Scott on his schedule, see if he's available on the 22nd to come and do an update.
That'd be great.
I can send something to you, but have it go to you. The short answer is real attempt to make revision since last year, one. Two, the New York State, New York, not the, New York State, and I said, requires minutes. Some other states only do days. We still have a minute requirement here. We're in a jam on that. And the solution actually is a heavily, we have to negotiate. And this is even a negotiated solution here.
With the union?
Yes, because you've got to pay teachers for their time. And there's additional minutes. And with a collective bargaining district, that's what has to happen. So lots of layers to this. We are trying to get the best out of a situation. We're now in a second stopgap year. We'd like to frankly shift to an advisory, but we have to negotiate that because that's a different use of teacher time. So we're pleased that, you know, I've been working with the teachers to come up with a better approach this year, one that's the teachers, I think, will value more. We hope the students will, but we'll see. But I think the, having Scott come in to kind of outline the attempts we've made here to have it be better, because the concerns and all, we've heard, we understood, we felt them internally as well.
Right, thank you.
I don't know if that's helpful, but we.
Yes.
It'd be great to have him come so we can ask other questions.
Thank you.
But let me, let me be clear. He, he's in that classic administrator mode of having been handed a problem not in his creation, and how do you get a solution within some pretty strict limits? But I just want to be clear on that.
And also to advance one of the goals of the portrait. But the thing is, is that typically with education, you go slow to go fast. And we were also trying to solve an concurrent problem with minutes, right? So it's trying to kind of move it all along. And then we learned from last year, and we think forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Teresa. Any other Board of Ed comments?